Meeting of September thirteenth. Welcome, everyone. We are in the city council chambers this evening for the first time in several years. So we're, we're trying out that to see how things go. Many of you, all of you from the public will be on Zoom. And there will be staff and board members here in person and will hopefully be able to do the meeting without any untoward complications. So thank you very much for attending. I will call the roll and Michelle.
Here.
John.
Present.
Harmon.
I'm here.
And do we have, we do have Brady. Good to see you, Brady.
Brady is here in a digital way and looking particularly ruddy faced on my camera for some reason, but I'm here.
Great. We have a unanimous board. And I think now we'll do the oath of office for Harmon Zuckerman, who is our new board member. And welcome, Harmon. We're pleased to have you. And once we do the oath of office, what I'd like to do is maybe give you a couple of minutes to introduce yourself, say a few words, and then each of us will, will do that as well so that you have kind of an idea about who we are and what, what we're interested in.
Thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate that.
So I think the oath is on the screen. If you want to read it, then that would be great.
Okay. I, Harmon Zuckerman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and of the state of Colorado and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Boulder, and faithfully perform the duties of the office of a member of the Open Space Board of Trustees, which I am about to enter.
Great. Thank you very much. Again, welcome. And if you take a couple of minutes and just maybe give us a sense of your background and interests. What I'm going to ask the board members and you as well, if you want to maybe say what you like most about being on the board and maybe your favorite place on open space or something like that.
Well, since I haven't prepared any remarks, I'll start by directly answering your, your prompt. And the, the thing that I like most about being on the board is the people. I've received such a warm welcome from my fellow board members and from staff that it's just, it's just really warmed me inside and I really appreciate that a lot. My favorite place in the OSMP system at this point is the Springbrook Loop. I've been enjoying the, I live in South Boulder and I've been enjoying riding my mountain bike really close to home and having a wonderful trail. And I just don't ever get bored of it. So now I'll go on to talk a little bit about myself, my background. So I, I I'm educated as a city and regional planner and also as a lawyer. And I practiced as a planner, running a few planning departments, most notably for OSBT purposes. I updated, I was the director of the update of the Lake Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Regional Plan, which is a landmark document, not, not from the update that I did, but from the first regional plan in 1984 was subject of two Supreme Court cases went all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States. So there's a lot of history around planning in Tahoe. And a lot of Tahoe, more than three quarters of the Tahoe Basin is open space. It's owned by the public. And, and so I've became, I became very familiar with open space management issues in my years at TRPA. Came to Boulder for law school and for family reasons and work at the, the firm of Fresco to join our government in Greenstein where I'm a shareholder. I focus a lot on land use and water issues in my practice. And I enjoyed public service. I sat on planning board for five years from 2016 to 2021, and I finished my term on planning board as the chair. And I was excited to have an opportunity to serve the city of Boulder again in this capacity because I care a lot about open space issues and, and open space. I don't consider myself ideological, nor do I have any sort of access to grind or bones to pick with the way that open space is being managed and used. And, and I really would like to think that I'll be a very open minded and collegial member of this board.
Great. Well, thank you and welcome again. We're glad that you're here and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
John, do you want to jump in real quick and just give us a brief synopsis of your career?
Well, this is, uh, this is my second year on the board. So I've, I've really been enjoying my time here. This is my first board that I've been on with the city. I joined the board because, you know, I'm a, I'm a frequent user of open space. Both me and my three dogs enjoy hiking on open space. My husband and I actually got married on open space at the top of Flagstaff Mountain. If you didn't know, Colorado is one of like three states where you can self solemnize your marriage and you don't need a judge or a priest to sign the form. So we went up on top of Flagstaff with our dog and signed the form and, you know, we're married there. So that's, that's my favorite part of the open space system is the top of Flagstaff.
Great. Thanks, Michelle.
Nice. Sorry, I'm out of practice. I can't believe those remarks were not prepared. I don't, don't believe that for a second. My name is Michelle Estrella. I am two and a half years into my sentence, I mean term here. And I, I too enjoy it. I am a glutton for punishment. This is my third city-ish board. I was on the Parks and Rec board and the Chautauqua board. And I'm enjoying my time here on open space, raising a family here with kids who just started middle school. So that's pretty fun. We spend time on mountain bikes on the, the system as well. But I am really enjoying Skunk Canyon these days, drop the kids off at school or at least get them out the door on their bikes. And then I walk over there, good way to center my day before I launch into meetings. So I want to welcome you, Harmon. Thank you so much. I, I have a lot of faith that you're going to be a collegial board member and I'm excited to have you here.
Great. Thank you. And I'm Dave Koontz. Lived in Boulder for 53 years, came, came out at grad school, worked many years with the Colorado Department of Natural Resources, ran the state natural areas program for several years and then came and worked for the open space department in the early nineties and retired at some point in the mid 2000s. I can't remember exactly when and then came back after the 2013 flood to help out for a couple of years. So I've kind of been in and out for a fairly long time. You know, and my, my view of a program like the Open Space and Mountain Parks Program is that it is one of the most significant programs in the country because of the way that it was established and the way that it's maintained and sustained. And it was a community effort that has been a community effort for years, ever since its inception in 1967. And some of the people that were responsible for that are still here. And it's, it's just been, I think, a tremendous asset, both to, you know, Boulder itself, to the Front Range and actually to the state. And it set the example for many other municipalities as far as protecting and managing local natural resources and, and natural lands. So it's a program that's near and dear to my heart. And one of the places that I like most is South Boulder Creek. You know, and South Boulder Creek actually is a state natural area. And so I kind of have feed in both camps and, but I, I think that one of the things that struck me when I was working for the state of Colorado is, but living in Boulder, at that time, you could come over Davidson Mesa and descend down into the Boulder Valley. And on either side of US 36, when you did that, coming from Denver, in the fall, there'd be this russet reddish, you know, grass that was growing, you know? And I looked out the window and I said, gosh, that looks like, you know, big blue stem, you know, Tallgrass Prairie. I'm from Wisconsin and I knew, know that because the University of Wisconsin established an arboretum many, many years ago and with Aldo Leopold and several other famous ecologists. And they restored the Tallgrass Prairie there and the, on either side of 36 was the same. It looked the same and it's like, whoa. And so I followed that up with some folks and it actually was Big Blue Stem, Tallgrass Prairie. And in, you know, that, that, that was it. I, I really appreciated everything that the city had done to, you know, protect places like that. So that's it. Brady, you should jump in as well.
Is everybody looking at me?
That's fine.
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is it my turn? Sorry. I, my, my, my internet has been a little bit thready. I may try to change that at the break. But anyway, Brady Robinson, Harmon, I really enjoyed our lunch together. And I will say that there's two things I love about being part of this board. Number one is I do conservation work, but my projects are thousands and thousands of miles away. And I love serving my community and being, yeah, helping out and being involved with local issues. I also enjoy the camaraderie of working with staff and the board. And I think the last thing is I, I enjoy good process and governance. And I've have a lot of experience in that in the nonprofit sector and very little, at least in the, in the government sector. And so I have a lot to learn. There's just amazing amount of things to learn. So it's, it's been my pleasure. I'm very disappointed that I'm no longer the junior member. So that happened quicker than I thought it was gonna, but anyway, welcome.
All of us need to grow up. Brady, all of us need to grow up at some point.
I know. So, so much for my OSBT youth. And, um, and my, my favorite place is the Flatirons. There's so many adventures to be had, their big and small. And I'm a climber and I love scrambling. And I went out and went up the third Flatiron the other day and just went really slow and just sat and looked to the west in awe of everything, you know, the wild and the crags. It's just incredibly beautiful out there and it's my favorite place. And if my, if my internet is thready, let me know and I apologize. Like I said, I may try to fix it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah. Let me just climb on what Brady said at the end, because when you look from the top of the Flatirons West, you can see almost forever and, and the forever part is Long's Peak. And the fact that, you know, there's open space in mountain parks on, on this end and Rocky Mountain National Park on the other end and, and Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management land in between. It, it just speaks to, you know, what the people of Colorado in, in the country have, have really done as far as trying to protect fragile and, and rare and special areas. So thanks to all. We appreciate that. And we'll look forward to fun and exciting times ahead. So with that, let's move to approval of the minutes. I'll go page by page and if anyone has any additions or corrections, please speak up. So page one, is there any? Any addition, are there any additions or corrections?
I have one correction on the section called Agenda Item Four. We use the word compliance study and sorry, Megan, what is the right term?
Habitat suitability study.
Great. That is.
Thank you. And I, I just realized I didn't have my microphone on. Did folks catch that? Okay.
That was a good catch. Thank you. And Megan, I have more of a question and a suggestion. You know, in this, the second to last line where it says temporary tent signage. I am wondering if we can explain real briefly what that is because I don't know that anyone really knows what tent signage means. And if we can kind of explain that a little more clearly, I think that would be great.
Yeah. So Jeff might be able to describe it a little better, but it's the like tent, giant plastic tent signage that, that's on like the middle or the side of the trail.
A-frames.
A-frames. Thank you.
Can we, can you give Megan some brief descriptive language that would clarify a little what that is?
We refer to them as sinekades, the formal. I don't know if that's. Yeah, like an A-frame sign and we can add some language in the.
Or maybe just a frame tent or something like that. So people have some. Sign. Yeah. People have some idea, you know, if they see that out on the system, what, what that actually is.
Correct. Yeah, we can add that for sure.
Great. Okay, let's go to page two. Anything on page two? Seen none. I will welcome a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
Great. Thanks. This will be a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
And Harmon. Great. And I vote yes as well. So it, the minutes are adopted and proved unanimously, four to zero. Okay, so now we're at the public comments for items that are not identified for a public hearing. There are no items on the agenda that are identified for a public hearing. And so we would welcome whatever public comments you would like to make in. Megan or Sam?
Yeah, sorry. I'm hiding behind a monitor back here.
If you would go over the protocol for the comments, I would appreciate it.
Okay. So the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this website. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. If you would like to speak and you haven't signed up in advance, you can raise your hand at this time. You'll either see an option to raise hand at the bottom of your screen or you can raise your hand by clicking on the participants box, the three dots on the bottom right, and then selecting raise hand. And I don't see anyone joining by phone, so I can go over that when we get to that point also. And we have two members of the public signed up for, to speak in advance. And I will allow you to unmute yourself as we, as I call your name. So first we have Miranda Carnasale, followed by Paula Schuler. Miranda, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Miranda Carnasale. I've been living here in Boulder County, county area for about a year now. I'm an environmentalist and an outdoors woman. But my day job is actually, I'm a location manager for television commercials and feature films. I recently did, I worked on such films as Barbie and Martin Scorsese's Killers of the Flower Moon, which is coming out in October. So I have about 15 years of experience doing film work. But my passion is really storytelling in nature. And one of the things that drew me to here was like what some of the board members had talked about, just the incredible beauty that exists in Boulder. And I would love to have the opportunity to, you know, appeal to the board about maybe changing some of the regulations about film policy. Now, I actually was, there was a project that filmed here last year called Elevation. I was a location manager on that and we filmed on Blue Bell Road. And there were some red tape that got cut that was actually over my head. But in that process, I discovered that, you know, OSMP has such an amazing staff. It's like such a well-oiled machine. And you guys really have the capacity to kind of restructure and rebuild some of your filming guidelines that would create a better path for filmmakers to come and, you know, film some of these beautiful areas. So my proposal is that over the next few months or the next year, I'd love to be able to meet with somebody or some people and just kind of go through what, you know, I think could be really helpful in, in just making filming more viable. Nothing crazy like we don't, we don't need to like change the drone policy, but just like the number of people, like 16 people is just not enough to sustain a real film crew. There's a couple of other things I'm not going to go over now, but you know, this is my area of expertise is working with entities, municipalities and mitigating concerns that they have so that we can find a path forward for filming. And I just, you know, it's important to me. I'm really passionate about it. So I'd love to hear what anybody has to say. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Miranda. Sam?
Yes, we have one more person signed up to speak in advance.
Paula, you should be able. Paula, you should be able to unmute yourself. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Good evening. At the July OSBT meeting, the trustees asked staff to report on specific strategies to improve neighbor relations. The HEAL group, Healthy Ecosystems and Agricultural Lands, took this to heart and conducted a poll of our 162 members, many of whom are neighbors to OSMP agricultural lands to find out how relations between OSMP and neighbors could be improved. All of you received an email from Elizabeth Black on September 1st outlining the complete results of this poll. And I hope that everyone took some time to look at it. I want to touch base on a few areas that can improve neighbor relations. Remove more prairie dogs. Neighbors want the prairie dogs removed from the OSMP agricultural fields next to their property. That's the number one item that will improve relations. There have been some very positive results from prior year removals, but the process has been very slow. Increasing lethal, lethal control to 200 acres a year versus closer to 100 acres, which has been the norm, will make a big difference. With the hiring of in-house staff and owning equipment, this commitment is absolutely possible and needed. Irrigate. Communicate collaboratively with fellow shareholders of irrigation ditches to work out water delivery was a poll item that received high marks to improve relations. We know that OSMP is identifying irrigation infrastructure problems and attempting to correct some of those issues. Neighbors and ditch shareholders may have valuable input that can help. Neighbors have put a high value on irrigation and want to see historically irrigable properties have water running on them again. Neighbors don't want to hear that it is too expensive or can't be done. They want to help make it happen. Weed control. Routinely clear noxious weeds on OSMP properties before seed set. Seeds blow in the wind. They also travel to other properties via the irrigation ditches. Clearing weeds will help OSMP parcels and it will also help neighbors tremendously. Committing to mow noxious weeds before the seed set should be a part of a management strategy and it needs to be done on a consistent basis. Communicate. Neighbors want a more open line of communication with OSMP. Meeting face to face with small groups of neighbors bordering each OSMP property with prairie dogs. Solicit neighbor issues and advice. Address the problems neighbors raised. All scored very high in the poll. Neighbors want a specific person and phone number to call when they have an issue or concern. Neighbors want their input taken seriously and they want their land respected. Communication with neighbors can be improved on many levels. These are just a few points from the poll. The HEAL poll provides good information and valuable comments that can be turned into positive actions. Good progress has been made in the last couple of years with regard to prairie dog removals and restoration of agricultural lands, but there is still a long way to go, especially with regard to OSMP being a good neighbor. So the question remains, what specific actions will OSMP implement to improve neighbor relations? Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Dan, do you want to respond to either of the comments?
Sure. I think I'll make note of Paula's last comment. As you know, we're, we are developing a memo that will lay out some of the neighbor relations issues, provide the background of what we currently do and identify some enhancement areas in that regards. And that will be provided to the board at the November board meeting and part of that packet. So that's an upcoming item that staff is, will be delivering, of course. And then we have the community meeting, which is part of being a good neighbor. That is now being scheduled and maybe at the next board meeting, we'll be able to announce the date for that. We're narrowing it down to a few dates that we have. So a couple of opportunities coming up later this fall.
Great. Thanks for that. And yeah, Paula, just to reiterate, the board will receive an update on the neighbor policy at its November meeting. Dan, do you want to say anything to Miranda about checking in with staff or meeting with staff? Or how, how would you suggest that we address her questions?
Well, updating, I'll turn it over to Sam. It handles a good part of our commercial use permitting, including working with the film permitting. And that is also something that's done in collaboration at the citywide level as well. But maybe Sam, if you have any comments on that or ideas.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So I'll address on the commercial use permit and film permit side. We, the commercial use and film permits are still subject to our OSMP rules and regulations as of right now. And so rules and regulations come from a handful of different places. They can come from a city manager rule. They can come from an ordinance. Some do not and some can be changed in different ways. But in terms of collaboration, I, I think there are areas where if we seek to change a city manager rule, for instance, the first step would be coming to the board and then have for recommendation and then council action. So there are places where if we would like to change a specific, if we like to change a specific rule, we can do that.
And if someone like Miranda would like to find out more about how to do that, should she contact you or who?
Yeah. So they, I think contacting me is a good place to start. And then we would help navigate the process to come to the board to speak and then city council for, for final approval.
Great. Yeah, just, I'll just back up that just a little bit to say that, you know, we've got a number of things we could possibly put on our work plan in a given year. So we would also, of course, welcome collaboration, hear what the concerns are, see if they can be addressed at the management level. If they can't, we could then formulate a process, but we probably would want to talk internally and perhaps with the board too about this is going to take, this is, this is this amount of lift. Is this something we want to take on in this given time? This is prioritization as well. I, I'm not trying to put a damper on it, but I just want to put the reality on it that there's a number of things that we could do in a given year. And it's ultimately about prioritizing of what the board and this staff feels like auto rise to a level. And this very well could be it. And if that's the case, we'd be more than willing to have folks sit down with us and talk things through.
Great.
And if I may just add in, I mean, Miranda, you can, you can write us all a letter. There's, you, you can send the OSBT a letter with some more details. You only had three minutes. I'm intrigued with your perspective and if you'd like to start. if you'd like to start with writing us a letter to give us some more information, that's another thing that's available to you.
And we would, at the staff level, we don't have to have hosting a meeting is something we do all the time and we'd be welcome to have Miranda come in and talk to us more about where the pinch points in her opinion are and, and, and have that conversation regardless if it becomes a full-blown project, but.
Right. Thank you both for that. And Miranda, I will just add that the board will consider any, any requests for, you know, changes to the rules and regs, but we will, we will do that based on, you know, the staff's review and recommendation. So the, the best place to start and certainly Brady's right, you can certainly send us a letter or email, but we'll, we'll want to have staff review what, whatever the proposal or question is and come to us with some recommendation to help us in our deliberations. So thank you both for your comments.
And we do have one more hand up.
Okay.
So I will. So we have a hand up from Lynn Siegel. Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, I'm speaking extemporaneously tonight. I'm very disappointed and disheartened with Caroline Miller's removal from the board. She was an excellent board member. And the, the issues that she had about metadata, about e-bikes overreach with a council member, about marginal meetings, about CU South and the multiplier effect of the open space. Those are all very concerning issues that were not dealt with and still are not dealt with. And Harmon Segurman is a great guy, very nice person. But I disagree with just about everything he's done on planning board for, watched him from twenty sixteen on or before that until twenty sixteen, whenever he was on. And I think he should step down and Caroline should be back in. And
Lynn, I'm going to interrupt, Lynn, I'm going to interrupt you. I am going to interrupt you and ask that you confine your comments to non-personal matters.
And Lynn, you, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, I want my ten seconds back. Dave, that is not okay. I have free speech here. I have a right to say what I want. Now.
You don't have the right to attack board members. I want to be clear on that, Lynn.
I have, I muted for now, so you can.
So you are muted currently. If you can confine your comments to substantive matters, that will be great. We will appreciate that. If you are going to comment on personal board members, that's not okay.
Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
I have, keep unmuting myself. I need to be left alone when I'm having my three minutes here, please.
You do not have the right to attack personal board members.
I'm not attacking anyone. That's your perception. Your perception, Dave. You and I agree to disagree. And I have a right to speak freely about what I feel. So don't interrupt me. Do not do that.
Lynn, you're mistaking what I just told you. You will not be allowed to speak if you're going to attack personal or make personal comments about.
I made no attacks. I made no attacks. What was my attack, Dave? You tell me. Is this a discussion between you and me? Or is this my?
If you can, if you can complete your comments.
I want to speak about Excel Energy and Michael Doherty and his, his failure of prosecution of them in a criminal case on a detached wire that Excel Energy, and I don't know if this has to do with Open Space Board of Trustees, because I don't know if our open space is involved there, but the Marshall Fire was a big deal and it's close to us. So I'm bringing it up. He did not prosecute Excel Energy and they had a do not repair order on the detached wire and they repaired it anyway. And said it was because the water pipes were going to blow. Well, you know what? They need to fix the water pipes and people need to be put up in a hotel. It's just like Lahaina. Done.
You need to conclude your comments, Lynn.
Done is not enough for you, Dave?
Done is enough. Thank you very much.
And no more hands.
Thank you. Great. So now we'll move to matters from the board. And the first item will be any comments or questions that we have on the written information memos that were in our packet. And the first one is Fort Chambers Poor Farm Site Management Plan Update. Does anyone want to comment on that?
Yeah, I just have a quick question on that particular memo. I enjoyed participating in that consultation over the summer and reading this particular memo. A question, do we have an expectation of? I know the MOUs in draft. Do, do you have an anticipated timeline and when folks might sign it? Or does it, does it stay in draft mode and we just have, have a continual conversation and edit it every year?
Yeah, just so, some clarification for those who might be following tribal relations initiatives in a larger context. So there's a couple of MOUs that are in draft form right now. One is what we call the more the citywide memorandum of understanding negotiation with sixteen American Indian tribal nations. That was sort of, of everyone who participated in over the last four years and building that MOU, we sort of gave a thumbs up to that in March. And that addresses a whole range of issues, some open space issues, citywide issues. And that's how we're going to work more collaboratively as partners in the long term. And that has already been signed by a couple of nations. So we're starting to build some momentum of execution on that end. In terms of the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Site Planning Initiative, in which three of those tribal nations are working with us that were impacted from the Sand Creek massacre, there's a separate, more project MOU of that we have in draft form of, of how we're, you know, what is the purpose of us working together on this site plan and that sort of thing? And that one has not been executed. And there's still talk about exactly what that MOU should be long-term as well. And so that particular MOU, we, we have it in final draft form. If the nations at any time decide to sign it, we would certainly sign it at our end. But we are, we are working in that relationship based on the terms of that MOU, regardless of, if the, if those nations have signed it or not. So it's an unsigned document, but yet it is guiding the work.
Thanks for that, Dan. I'd like to just piggyback on Michelle's question. And on the, on the draft, the site management plan, you know, the three tribes are reviewing the draft. Can you update us real quickly on kind of how that's going and where that review stands at this point?
Yeah, so this summer, what are, this was the second in-person meeting with the tribes. And the goal of this summer was to again, get to know the property a little bit more. So we did another site visit out to the property. We also then began to provide the tribal members with various options of, of what can continue on this property or maybe some new activities that could occur. For instance, we revisited the idea of the agricultural activities, the, the ecological activities, the educational opportunities that may exist there, the recreational opportunities that may exist. And so we spent the first day talking about how those options, how you could select from a menu and what feels right to you. And then the second day, we, we sort of, is this what we heard from everybody in the first day? And we sort of had confirmation from our conversation from the site visit and from the afternoon session of, of what themes do we, should we be emphasizing in the site plan? And quite clearly, almost, I mean unanimously amongst the tribe is heal the land, heal the people was the theme that they would like us to do that at this point in time, they feel the best thing we could do to honor the site is to clean it up and restore it. We inherited a site that was a formal gravel mining operation damaged in the flood. It's got some ecological restoration needs, some cleanup needs. And they basically said, before we can probably think about any substantive recreational activities out there, you, we ought to be spending the next few years cleaning it up and restoring it. So restore the land. And through that, we can honor restoring the people. So the second element was, and I'm leaving some things out, but the second major element or theme was accurately tell the story of the Sand Creek massacre at the site, ideally at around the location where that mark historic marker was located. So those are some sort of immediate things that they all sort of rallied around. There's other things that were discussed and we are, you know, seeking in October when they're invited back to get more detailed of what a site plan might start to look like and see if we can get some thumbs up on their idea of a site plan. And then this winter, bring that forward for board and ultimately some community conversations. And so that's sort of the process.
Great, thanks. So in October, the, the three tribe representatives of the three tribes will be back in meeting with us on kind of next steps and.
That is the plan, whether it's in person or virtual, it could be a combination or it could be virtual. Since there, there probably won't be another site visit in the equation. We were fortunate that we had actually at least two representatives from each tribe in, in Boulder for the three days in, in the summer. So it was a really great opportunity.
Yeah, I think it's, it is a really great opportunity and we look forward to hearing how it progresses. So any other comments on the Fort Chambers item? The prairie dog barrier cost share program, does anyone have any comments or thoughts on that?
Dave, I do.
Okay.
I just want to say a thank you to staff for preparing the memo and for having specifics of the 2024 launch and outlining how it's going to work. I just think it's great progress and I just want to say thank you for that. And I also have two other thank yous that I'd like to share right now, Dan.
Okay, no, go ahead.
First one is directed to you. First one is directed to you. I want to thank you for maintaining, working to maintain decorum and productive meetings during our public hearing. And I think the fact that you spoke up to do so today was great. So I want to thank you for that. And I also want to congratulate the staff on moving things into the city council chambers. And I'm on the other side of the tech and it's all working. So y'all did it. Yeah, that's it.
Great. Thanks, Brady. John, you're, you're okay. Heather, I just thought if you would take a couple of minutes and just run through real quickly, kind of the, the next steps as far as including the neighbors and in, in the conversation on kind of getting to where we want to be with the barrier issue.
Sure. Yeah. So staff is working through details of what implementation in 2024 will look like. Our intent at this point is to have those details available in early December to roll out at the public meeting. And then they would also then come to the board when we present our 2024 management plans in January or February and then go to, to council in the information packet. And then we would be providing information to neighbors that would qualify in 2024 for our pilot program so that they understand the program and understand how they could apply and how, how awards would work. So all of that's still to be rolled out, but, but that's the intent.
So the qualifications, those will, will what? Be developed as we move along or?
They, they will. I mean, certainly we're working on developing the scoring criteria and that, that's intended to stretch, not just for the pilot, but throughout the program, because I think it's likely there will be a lot of interest in the program. And so we want to make sure that we're supporting barriers where they're most likely to make a difference. And so in 2024 with a pilot program, what we are working on is what that scope will look like.
Okay.
How, you know, how much of an area we think is feasible for us the first year before we've kind of seen how things can go. So I think in 2024, the qualifications will be different. It may be sort of a specific area of the system that will be focused on. Beyond that, as long as things go well, I think those qualifications would be based more on is it an adjacent landowner? Are there prairie dogs directly adjacent to them? Those, those types of fairly basic qualifications.
So at the December meeting, will there be an opportunity for people at least to see them in draft form or or to know in some context, what we're thinking or what we're looking at?
I think that's our hope. Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Yeah, I think that would, that would be great. And maybe if they'd be available, if, if we can get them available before the meeting, so people have a chance to.
Yeah. So always for the public meeting, we post our full presentations online at least a week before the meeting. So people have a chance to review all the material and ask any questions that they may have ahead of time.
Great, great. Thank you. Any other comments on that? The third and last item is the Jefferson County Colorado Front Range Trail feasibility study final report. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that memo? Great. So this is kind of the, the, the leg of the, of the regional trail that exits Jefferson County and comes into Boulder County. Basically in the south end of the system that Colton Trail. So great. We'll appreciate keeping updated as things progress on, on that project, but I think we're good. So let me just say a couple of other real quick things. Dan, Dan, I wanted to ask you maybe to say a couple of things about the city's progress on the board. Assistance, compensation, the board, what the council is looking at basically as a board's roles and functions, kind of where we are in, in that process. And then I want Michelle to have an opportunity to just update the board on her participation in that review.
Sure. Yeah. So there is ongoing currently right now, a boards and commission assessment. And to help support that assessment, city hired, and this was a direction of city council to look at a, how we could approve city boards and commit the city boards and commissions program area. So they hired a consulting firm and that consulting firm has about a five-month window of steps that they're leading through with the ultimate goal of a November, I believe, November ninth presentation at a study session to city council in which they'll give the council a pretty thorough update on their assessment. And that assessment consists of several different pieces. One is they are doing questionnaires of, of staff members, our liaisons, the directors, board members, commission members. So there's sort of a questionnaire portion. And then there's one-on-one surveys or interviews, if you will. I participated in a two-hour session with Ally Rhodes from Parks and Rec. We were teamed together in which they asked us a number of different questions, all things boards and commissions. And, and the other thing is they're doing is they're collecting an assessment of how do every board and commission function? How does, how does staff support each board and commission? Is, is there consistency in how we all do it? Are we all over the place? Is there a need for consistency? And then the question of, of functions, roles, responsibilities. And embedded all this are some big, but yet issues underneath this, which is are there barriers to serving on our boards and commissions? And, and can we identify what some of those are? In which maybe we're leaving sectors of community members out of the equation of, of maybe not even knowing that there's an, how to apply for a board or, or perhaps once you get on it, that there's too many. Maybe is the five year period an impediment? So what are the impediments or barriers to participating and serving on a board and commission? That's one sort of issue amongst these larger issues that I've been talking about. All of it to say is this is all going to be rolled up into our report given to council on November ninth.
Great. And we'll get to see your that report.
I'll certainly make a note to provide you all a link when whenever it is released.
Michelle, do you want to add anything?
Dan, you covered that very well. I was invited to be a participant in a one on one meeting with the consulting firm. And I completed my my session about a month ago. And so I thought that was a positive experience and I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with.
Yeah, one of one of our concerns is is certainly about the support and assistance for board members that, you know, have childcare needs or, you know, that's whatever kind of limits their ability to participate in whatever roles that and functions the board requires. And so we're hoping that one of the outcomes of this review will be some clarity and commitment to addressing some of those issues. Thanks for that. The next item will be the boards retreat update. And Dan, I'm going to ask Michelle, I'm going to ask you to to take over.
I'm going to take the lead on this update, but Brady, please chime in if I if I miss anything. I wanted to update everybody about how the retreat planning has been going. Our committee met again last week. It's a nice experience, a nice excuse to have lunch together. By the way, it was free. I don't know if Brady told you that. They just didn't charge us, so it was pretty fun.
Oh, yeah, that's material. Yeah, you don't owe us anything. Declare that on your financial statement.
I know nothing.
Yeah. So but we left them a nice tip. And so we've met a couple of times and I just wanted to run you down where we are in that process. I just want to remind everybody though, that this is our retreat. And so this is our opportunity to talk about the things that we want to talk about. And I know that you're new to our board and but I would welcome any any thoughts that you have after tonight's meeting to contribute to the topics. But so today, Dan sent should have sent out, actually, I know you did. You all should have received a draft of the agenda and another attachment that talked about the additional topics that could slot in. And but I'm going to talk about the general structure. We've tried to incorporate many of the topic suggestions so far. And yeah, we're seeking additional input for a third topic. We'd like you all to respond to that second attachment with rankings by noon on Friday so that we could finalize the agenda sometime on Monday. And, you know, I also wanted to ask you all two things. You know, what was helpful last year is that we assigned a facilitator, a board member to be a facilitator through some of the sections. And I thought that was really useful. I neglected to bring this up to Brady and and Dan. But I just realized that today that we we should have done that. So I'd like you to ask you all, would you like to volunteer for a section? You could do that tonight or I could volunteer you later. So you choose.
Maybe we could volunteer by Friday. Could we do that?
Okay, yeah.
As part of whatever else we send in.
Yeah, that sounds good. And then do you have any other suggestions? You can bring that up tonight, but also reply to Dan's email before Friday so that we we can absorb those ideas. So we're going to be meeting on Tuesday, September 26 from eight thirty to three at the Foothills Nature Center. We're going to open it up the first half an hour for a welcome and and opening and sharing. And then we're going to talk about this topic one, which is the OSBT's role in the annual OSMP budget development. We thought that would be, that was one of the the major topics that were brought up. And we we thought that one would go ahead and we'd go ahead and slot that into our agenda. And then we would also talk about the complex planning framework that the city has and OSMP so that when we go through all of these plans and policies throughout the year, we we could understand how they all fit in with one another and 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 understand understand sort of the history behind those documents and an intention to possibly keep them as living documents. So that's another topic that we thought we would explore. The the other topic which we we had agreed in in previous meetings is that we another living document would be our rules of procedures. And there were several ideas, I don't think I've seen all of the ideas of sections that we wanted to approach. I think the the document continues to be better and better every year. And it's really an understanding of how we work together as a group. So we thought we would give that an hour as well. Another thing that we started doing last year is is start planning ahead for 2024. That was a sticky note exercise in which we brought together the the things that we would like to take on next year. So the and then city, the city staff, OSMP staff would also tell us like what is already on their work plan so that we we could all have kind of a collective hope and understanding of the the topics that we would discuss next year. And then we have this walk and walk and talk. This is the Wildland Urban Interface Land Management and Fire Mitigation Discussion. We're going to be in a perfect location to do that. And then the third topic is what what we are soliciting your input and in slotting in in the afternoon. And then we would wrap that up and by three o'clock be able to go get our kids after school, hopefully. Any questions, concerns and additional suggestions at this point in time?
I'll just make a note that I only heard from a couple of trustees regarding what sections of the rules of procedures that they're particularly interested in diving into. Obviously, it's a multiple page document. We wouldn't have time in an hour to go through each section. So the last few years, we've been honing in on a particular section that trustees feel like, yeah, let's revisit that. So that could also be still some leftover homework. If you feel like there is a section that you would like us to revisit, we're still determining exactly what portions of that document do we want to put our attention to.
Yes, thank you. Please let us know what you might be thinking so we we could anticipate that. Brady, did I miss anything from your perspective?
I don't think so. Thank you for handling it, for presenting on it tonight.
Super.
In terms of volunteering, are you looking for us to like pick a section we want to volunteer for? Or just more generally volunteer?
A section that you would be interested in?
Okay, I'm happy to volunteer for a section. I'll take a look at them and and pick out a couple that look interesting.
Thank you very much, Michelle, and thanks to Michelle and Brady and Dan for the the good work. This looks like an excellent retreat format. Reminder that we are going to be offsite at the Foothills Nature Center. And if you can get your comments, I just want to reiterate it's important to get your rankings to Dan by Friday so that the committee has a chance to integrate whatever comes out of that into the retreat agenda.
And if I could just give one bit of a heads up, and Dave, I already let you know, is that most of the time we meet in the hub, which was built out fresh and clean in 2018. We are going to the Foothills Nature Center, which is a much more rustic setting. We will hopefully have internet, but it is a an old building. We are not going to have all the technologies with us. We're going to do our best to do the minimum of making sure it's recorded. And so we have a record of the meeting. But I just want to let you all know that we have purposely chose something with a little bit of open space character. And in doing so, it will be much more rustic than the hub.
We're looking forward to that. All right.
All right, I'll hold you to that.
Well, and as Michelle said, it'll be a we're right on site for the walk around. So we won't have to drive anywhere. We just walk out the door. So that that'll be great. So thanks again for that. I have a couple of other real quick things. Just a shout out to the education and outreach group. I asked for a session with one of the volunteers, one of the Nashville's volunteers, particularly on the Ranger Cottage Garden as far as it's use and management. And I just wanted to show the board that that there's been a lot of effort, staff wise and volunteer wise, put into this garden, which is the Memorial Anne Armstrong Memorial Garden. Anne Armstrong was one of the long term mountain parks and open space employee who unfortunately died tragically, actually in the in the late 90s. But her heart and soul went into establishing this garden, which is a place to exhibit native plants for people that are on their way to the Chautauqua Trail System. And if you haven't really taken a few minutes to look at it, you should. And I just wanted to show you that they put together some information to help people understand what they're going to see as they move out on the trails into the system. And they even have more electronic information that people can access both there as well as in transit. So a lot of effort being put into the educational opportunities at at the Ranger Cottage. So and Michelle, thanks very much for for shepherding that. So the the other thing is that there is going to be an ag tenant recognition potluck on Friday evening at the Beach Pavilion. And Brady and I are are signed up to join the group there. If there is any other interest in being there and meeting many of the ranchers and farmers who are lessees and tenants of the Open Space and Mountain Parks Program, that would be great. Let me know. And Brady or I will yield our position. Brady's attendance is somewhat marginal at this point, so.
I'm flying in right beforehand and it's not that I don't want to be there, so I apologize for that.
Right. But I will certainly yield my position if there's other interest in doing that. But it's a good opportunity to get together informally with a lot of the folks that are very important for managing agricultural lands on the on the system. And one last thing quickly, and this is a question for you, Dan. Since we're going to be at the Foothills Nature Center, I am remembering that I think a couple of years ago when we talked about the Wonderland Lake Management Plan, that we were going to change the signs to say Wonderland Lake Wildlife Area or Nature Preserve or something like that. And I have not seen that. Is is has is that happening or where are we on that? And if it could happen while we're out there at the nature center, wouldn't that be great?
No, assign a case, please.
But anyway, I I think if we can get those signs or whatever the sign, not whatever, this the signs that qualify to identify the areas of wildlife habitat or or nature preserve, I think that would be very good because we did agree to do that a couple of years ago, as I'm recalling.
Yeah, Dave, I I believe that some of the signs are out there that do reflect the wildlife sanctuary title. But I can certainly confirm, you know, and I think even if we want to do, look at those signs while we're doing the walk around.
Right, right.
Or I can talk with the sign staff and just get a confirmation.
You know, the one Jeff and I'm most interested in is actually the main sign on Broadway, which I know will take a lot longer to do. But I am wondering whether we can kind of get that in the works because a lot of people go by there. And I think if we can get the idea that, you know, this is a nature preserve kind of in people's minds, that that will be very helpful as far as their appreciation of that area.
Okay. So yeah, in fact, we're working on a larger implementation project right now of the entire Foothills Nature Center and that area that the junior rangers.
Okay, great.
With some anticipated improvements at the trailhead that are all called for ISP Integrated Site.
Right.
I'll get a status on all that and we can talk more if not at the next board meeting, definitely at the retreat.
Okay. Well, we may even have some suggestions about upgrading the Foothills Nature Center, having been there.
Design feedback.
Hey, thanks. Okay, I think we're done. If there are no other matters. Brady, are you okay? Okay, Dan, I think you're up.
Yeah, well, we've got three main topics under matters from the department tonight. And we are actually going to start and I'm going to turn things over to my colleague Jeff Haley, who will introduce the first topic, which is to provide you all with a heads up on a big trailhead renovation project that's in the works out at the Marshall Mesa area. And so I'll have Jeff introduce the subject and turn things over to Eileen.
Yeah, thank you. As Dan mentioned, we're excited about the Marshall Mesa Trailhead Project. It was actually a project that was funded in our 2024 CIP that the board had reviewed and considered just in the recent months. So we're actually already well underway working on the design and a lot of the the background work that goes into that project in order to be closer to implementation next year. We wanted to share a lot of the goals for the project, talk a bit about how it relates to our master plan strategies, a little bit about what's informed the design and basically just seek the board's feedback. Any questions, comments, and just have an opportunity to update you on that project. It's actually quite similar to the gateway sign that we presented, I think it was last month or recently. The board doesn't doesn't necessarily have an authority or approving body role. It's not a, you know, seeking your approval or consideration in that regard. But most importantly, we want to make sure you're all aware of the project and what's going into it. So we do have some more, some new board members, obviously with Harmon and recent board members. So we're going to talk a bit more generally about our trailheads a little bit and how we approach those and then dive into detail specifically with Marshall Mesa for sure. The last thing I'll mention is obviously there's a lot going on in Marshall Mesa with obviously the fire in recent years and other things. Tonight, we really hope to stay pretty focused just on the trailhead. In fact, it was being considered for renovation before the fire. And obviously, the fire has had an impact on that. So Eileen has done an exceptional job managing this project and doing great work. I'll turn it over here to introduce herself and get going.
Thank you. I'm Eileen Flack, Senior Landscape Architect and the Project Manager on the Marshall Mesa Trailhead Improvements. Am I doing okay with this? And we're, she's going to change the slide, so we'll make that work. Marshall Mesa is located at the southeast intersection, corner of the intersection of Broadway or 93 and 170 or Eldorado Springs Drive. It acts as kind of a gateway to the city and for many visitors, it's their first contact with the system. From our surveys, people really value the fact that this is close by, that there's plenty of parking and that there's biking available there. And I've included some trailhead parking counts that show up to 33% occupancy on the weekends. And then this is considered the high end of a medium volume class trails. It's kind of, I shared the trail data because it shows that our muddy trail closures are working when it drops out on those few days when the snow is melting. We have the muddy trail closures that are really being effective here. People value biking both to get to the trailhead. We have almost 35% of people coming to the trailhead by bike, so that's a big multimodal win. And then almost 60% of people say that biking is their primary. So that's a big multimodal win. And then almost sixty percent of people say that biking is their primary activity there. But of course, people are coming to access the rich ecosystem that is here. There's incredible geology that's showing up, very visible. There's grasslands, shrublands, ponderosa pine and wetland habitats and all of the habit, all the plants and animals that support. And there's a rich geological history that shows up in how we have two ditches bringing water on the site, a lower one and an upper one. And then there's the indigenous peoples who occupy this area and the mining history as well. So all of that contributes to what makes this place special. We did a trailhead assessment in 2021, looking at all of our trailheads in terms of their, their condition assessment. And each one got kind of a scorecard. And the, the big picture there was that everybody loves our trailheads. They're being used extensively and that there's a huge backlog of maintenance that needs to be addressed, often with renovations and kind of redoing it. We have a system of classifying our trailheads to set, have clarified expectations about what kind of infrastructure you might expect at those trailheads. And so Marshall Mesa is our level three, the highest level of visitor infrastructure. So you'll see the most components at this kind of trailhead. And then we had Lotus Sustainability and Engineering do an assessment, looking at our trailheads in terms of their carbon footprint of the materials that we use, how visitors come to the trailheads and how waste is managed at our trailheads. And they looked at it from this like cradle to grave lens of what, what our carbon footprint is. And they pointed us in some interesting directions about how we can minimize our carbon footprint at our trailheads.
So Eileen, can you go back to that slide? What is that slide showing us?
Well, I like the rainbow one, but it's, it's showing that each step of a material's use has implications. So all of the work that goes into mining the materials that go into a product and then how it's constructed and then how it's used, and then what happens when it's deconstructed. And so Lotus has lots of magical formulas and spreadsheets that they go through just looking at all of the impacts from throughout a product's life cycle or like from a waste life cycle, how, how that works.
Okay, thanks.
In our renovations, we're looking at these trailheads, not just as parking lots, but as special places. They are a kind of eco tone, a transition between the built environment and the system as it, as a whole. And so it's a tremendous opportunity to exhibit evidence of care, to show that we use materials wisely, that we are using land wisely, that we have intuitive wayfinding that when people come, they know where they're supposed to go. They just know that they're going to make a transition here and they feel comfortable making that transition, that these are welcoming and inviting places. And all of these design features cue the new leave no trace behaviors that set people up for success on the system. We're also really excited about climate-ready landscapes. These are landscapes that focus on native and water-wise and fire-wise plantings. And so these are models for ecologically functional plantings, looking at what plants have to teach us and what wisdom we can get from our plants. We're working on the Marshall Mesa Trailhead because of the fire. There are a number of elements that, that, there are, there's a bunch of infrastructure that needs to be replaced following the fire. We are working with FEMA in particular on replacing our restrooms with a more resilient concrete vault structures that are not going to have that, would not have that issue in the future. And it's of course important to acknowledge the role of the site for our community as a focus of that fire. And we are also working with DRMS, who has been doing ongoing monitoring to mitigate the previous mining activities. And we are working, we have been coordinating with them and we will continue to coordinate with them as they develop their plans. We've also been working on visitor safety and access, coordinating with both the county transportation and with CDAT. We recently worked together to put in a fence along the Eldorado Park and Ride Lot, defining a driveway and a pedestrian crossing. And then we put in a temporary access route to the trailhead. And so, and this has been really effective. People are really happy with the, the safety improvements here. The trailhead is located on this former building site. And we just used their driveway entrance when the trailhead was built. But that driveway is too close to Colorado 93 to Broadway to allow for full turn movements. And so I know I've been frustrated trying to make a left out of that parking lot, but we're going to look at relocating the drive access to have full turn movements and safety there. We are working through, the trailheads and the renovations are a great place to address many of our master plan strategies. So I'll just walk through a few of those that we're going to be hitting. Addressing the global climate crisis here and now is a big one to tackle. But one component of that is in our increasingly warming climate shade is a safety issue. And so making sure that we provide shade for, for visitors on the system, whether that is through structures or through trees. We have a lot of considerations with trees. Do we choose ponderosas that are only adapted to smaller fires? Do we choose cottonwoods that have boom and bust growth cycles that end up being really hazardous in visitor infrastructure situations? Do we use native understory trees that provide shade from the west rather than shade from above? And so we're looking through all those as potential opportunities. And we want to include landscapes that inspire better relationship with the plants. And of course, we want to facilitate meaningful connections with nature that help people make good decisions in the rest of their lives. We want to make sure we're including ample organized parking. That's intuitive. People understand how to use it, that we support multimodal transportation with bike parking and shuttle parking. Right now, shuttle buses can't enter the, the trailhead because the turn radio, I don't support them. And so baked into the infrastructure development is making sure we can have that, those vehicles access the system. And we want to be as welcoming to diverse backgrounds and abilities as possible. In particular, accessibility supports everybody. It supports a wide range of a diverse community and it makes the whole place more compelling and inviting to users throughout their, their lives. We have a robust signs program. We are continuing to evolve that with graphic regulation boards and bilingual signage. And then I wanted to share about the Eco Healing Project that was a joint initiative between the Boulder Youth Initiative and CU, looking at how, how we can use nature to heal us. And in a survey of the children in our community, they overwhelmingly said that they wanted to have interpretation that was about outdoor art and outdoor experiences, that it was important to them to bring themselves to the experience and have a personal relationship with it. And I think that's a really interesting thing, like that our kids know that they want, they want to be able to understand something, but know it through their own interpretation. And so the CU students work through some really cool studio exercises, revealing things that are not necessarily visible, how deep the roots are, what's going on with the coal mining, what's happening with prairie dogs. And this kind of interactive site interpretation communicates what it means to be right here, what it is on this place that, where are you and how do you understand that? We're also working with the family of a community, community member who lost their life in the fire to develop a feature that recognizes the impact of fire on our community and the ecosystem and acknowledges the loss and the renewal that come from fire as another interpretive element on the site. Passive Rec does not just mean moving through a site. There's lots of passive rec that actually involves what it means to be invited to take a seat and contemplate what it means to be with your family, having a picnic together outdoors, to have a perspective frame for you in a different way. These are all components of passive rec. As is stewardship as recreation, increasingly people really want to be involved in caring for the earth and knowing that they're good for the earth and, and can find that piece of themselves that is positive. And then providing welcoming and inspiring visitor facilities. And we want to concentrate our infrastructure in accessible places, both for visitors and for maintenance. We have a long legacy of infrastructure, helping people to feel welcomed and inspired. On this site, we have a kind of funky structure that we call the backstop. And we're looking to repurpose that or reengage its original intent, which seems to be more connecting and not as confining as it ended up being with the interpretive features. So that's a lot of stuff and all of that kind of gets synthesized together into the trailhead design. And we have the 2007 trailhead design that has many of the same features that are configured differently. We have parking laid out with different areas and equestrian parking and structures and picnic areas and plantings and all of those components. We're looking at it in a little differently now. This is of course a concept plan and it will evolve and change through the design process, but this is where we are right now. And we have a driveway access that aligns with the CDAT parking lot entrance for a safe entry sequence. And then the layout of the parking lot is just pretty straightforward and clear. You arrive and you can figure out where you're supposed to park. There's a place for a shuttle bus to turn around and drop people off. There is equestrian parking and accessible parking. There is a bike parking area and plaza gathering space so folks can meet their group, not in the middle of the parking lot, but off to the side. And there's a gathering area again where you can sit and tie your shoes and make a transition before you head out onto the trails. And there is a shade shelter that can work for people waiting for that shuttle or for, for picnicking and a long picnic edge. There's some of that interactive site interpretation that then will start leaning out onto a nature loop that heads to the north, that provides shade and an accessible route. And then we have the vault restroom downwind of everything else on the site. We are kind of, we're in September, kind of at the end of conceptual design. We'll be moving into the schematic design and construction documents through 2024 that will align with permitting and procurement through 2024. Next fall, DRMS is planning to do their mitigation work and we'll come in following that mitigation work and do the, our trailhead renovation. Thank you for your time. Love to hear if there are things that you found complete, particularly compelling or you have questions about or that you'd like to discuss more.
Do we have any questions for Eileen or Jeff?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I'll go first. That's okay. Thank you for the update in the packet. It was really good. I really enjoyed the drawings. And I, I really feel like I have a thorough picture of, you know, what y'all are thinking for this space. And it was really well put together. Thank you.
Michelle?
I enjoyed this topic a lot, especially hearing about shade. We're one of the families who bike from our house to this trailhead. And we've had many, many meltdowns because everybody is super hot by the time we get there. And that backstop, we look for a sliver of shade at that black, at that backstop and just like are hiding there until we get up the energy to do it again. And like I said, many meltdowns. But so I'm really, really excited to see these designs and really excited when you start digging. Question for you, when you, when you envision, I know this is just in concept phase, but when you envision the shelter, is, is it going to be rentable? So if it is rented, then other folks couldn't seek that shade? I know you're going to, it looks like you're trying to put other trees around there, but will you try to sprinkle in some other places? If you do end up renting those shelters?
That's a good point. We would, we wouldn't want to make that shelter not available to the general community. So if we were going to have a rentable place, I would think we would add another one to make that happen.
Yeah, that's correct. And again, the, the image and the plan that Eileen's presented this evening is, as we had noted, somewhat conceptual. I think we're looking at where are the shade opportunities on the site? You bring up a great point. If we do have a reservation pavilion, can others find shade as well or not feel like they're encroaching on that, that group? With the shuttle stop as well, we've also been considering if, you know, if you're using the shuttle service, you know, and you have to stand out there for several minutes, are you, how comfortable are you? Is there shade for that as well? So I think we'll probably look at a variety of opportunities for shade. We've identified, as you saw in the plan, conceptually, a few pavilions and that kind of thing. But yeah, that's a great comment to make note of. That we don't isolate anyone.
That would be wonderful. Does OSMP have a policy, you probably know this answer, of not having potable water on site?
It's not a policy. There is a well at the site and we're going to be looking at using that for irrigation, for establishment of some plantings. But it's not potable water.
Yeah. Yeah. And we, you know, as you know, Michelle, we do have like drinking fountains at Chautauqua. That's something we're exploring, just like Eileen mentioned with how do we understand the changing climate and the impact it has on our visitors, their experience? Chautauqua in particular, we have access to water through the utilities there at Marshall Mesa, like she mentioned. It's typically a question of do we have access to tap into the domestic water, you know, to provide that? So I think that's something we'll continue exploring. There might be opportunities at Marshall, but we'll have to look into that. Yeah, it comes with permitting and, you know, entitlement requirements and that sort of thing to bring utilities into the site. So it's just, we have to explore the cost and feasibility of that too.
Harmon, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. So what a complicated site with, I mean, even an old fire system that you're trying to keep online, even though the commercial building that had it wasn't, isn't being used anymore, just a lot of stuff going on. It looks like there's so much reconfiguration of the parking lots that there's going to be a pretty significant amount of re-vedge and re-grading involved, not just the, the current driveway, but also stuff to the east. Is that a big part of the plan?
We're anticipating a fair amount of impact from the DRMS mitigation that will be, we're trying to do our best to do our best with. But yes, revegetation is going to be a critical piece of success of this system. And so looking at what we can do to, to ensure success of that revenge is going to be key.
Yeah, I mean, a coal seam fire going on while you're trying to do the project and stuff. It's, I mean, it's really a very complicated site. One thing I've noticed from using that trailhead over the years is just that there's like, for people who are using it for the first or second time, there's almost like a little wayfinding exercise they need to go through on that very rocky exposed area where all the, the overburden's been scraped off. And it's, there's no defined, easy to find trail and the signage isn't always right there. And people are wondering, well, which do I go to go up to community ditch? Or which way do I go to go east on Marshall Mesa? So I don't know if that area is in the scope of work or not, or if the work you're doing with the re-vedge on the east side is going to give you a way to make it a little clearer for folks. Though it's kind of fun trying to find your way the first time.
It's an exploration. And the, the fire burned the accessible trail that kind of went down along that route. And we're really looking at that trail was never, didn't get you a great experience. We think we can do better. And so we're going to be looking at the whole trail system and yes, making those connections with clarity and, and grace.
That's great.
Yeah, I think I would add to the restoration, revegetation. Eileen, you know, this evening, we talked a lot about the trailhead, so it sounds kind of infrastructure heavy. Eileen is working closely with our resource and stewardship staff and ecologist really understanding what those needs are for revegetation, both from the fire as well as the trailhead construction and the, you know, mitigation work. So, yeah, and I think she alluded to that in the presentation, just the extent of restoring the site. And, you know, like we talk about the fire, the, the goal of, you know, renewal and rebirth and, you know, rebuilding back. So. So the wayfinding, I mean, it's in kind of a mess right now. Unfortunately, we're in this interim phase, but yeah, that's a key part. Like she mentioned with, you know, setting our visitors up for success, you know, how do I behave and how do I act? And where do I find the trails and all those things through interpretive signs, wayfinding, et cetera? So.
Well, thanks for a great presentation. I especially liked when you talked about giving people different perspectives. And there was that slide that had the picture of the big open window in the wall of that shed. It looked like the biggest big screen TV. You could imagine just sitting your kids down in front of this. This is a hundred and twenty inch screen, kids. Look out there. That was wonderful. So thank you.
Thanks. Brady, do you have any comments or questions?
I just impressed. I like moving the driveway. It's the kind of thing where it wouldn't occur to me to do that. And then looking at the map and thinking about the floor, it makes that go a lot of sense. And I just think, great work. I'm impressed.
Great, thanks. So I, I get the last word, I guess. So I, I really think that it's a, a good concept. I have a couple of questions. This, it wasn't clear to me that the old cistern was under the old parking lot or the new park, the new parking.
So the old cistern is adjacent to the equestrian section of the existing parking lot. But the existing cistern was built for the building fire purposes, not for wildland firefighting purposes. And so we're looking at including a new cistern with, working with Mountain View on a new cistern.
So that would be under the parking lot?
It would be. It, we're still working out where it would be exactly. The hope would be that the trucks would access it from 170. So the, the facility itself might be under the parking lot or it might be closer to it. If you have it up higher, you might be able to fill it more quickly. There's a lot of details that we're working out with them.
I, I guess I would personally encourage that it be included in whatever infrastructure elements we have as much as possible, just to, you know, minimize the additional impact on the, on the land. And my, another question I have is the parking spaces for the new trailhead, are they equivalent to what was there previously or?
It's within like 10% of the same number. It's about the same.
Okay, so the footprint is more or less the same?
It's more or less the same. We're organizing the parking a little more intuitively so you don't have that parking on an arc, which ends up being
Right, yeah.
a little ineffective. So yeah, it's, it's about the same, same area that's impacted. The driveway is of course much longer, but.
Right, right.
Okay, you can, the site plan shows it pretty, if you want to pull that back up, but just to kind of, Eileen overlaid the new proposed design pretty well on the existing kind of aerial photography.
Yeah, it can kind of, it kind of reads.
You can see in the packet too, but.
Right, right.
So my most important comment, and I don't want to be a wet blanket on the need for shade because that, that is definitely a need. But my concern, Eileen, is that, and I talked with Jeff about this, that in, in the memo, it looks like we're, we're trying to focus, you know, shade provision through forests and trees. And, you know, for me, this, this area is a native grassland. And the most important, I think, educational or interpretive element of this area is to talk about, you know, the benefits of fire actually on native landscapes. And, and I know we're going to talk and, you know, fire has always been conceived as very destructive. But in fact, these landscapes require fire. And so for me, it's a really important component of, of the trailhead reconstruction to have, you know, really good interpretation, education, you know, facilities so that people can understand that, you know, just because there was a fire here, it didn't destroy the grassland. Now, you know, there's a different, you know, concept on the urban or developed environment. But it's, you know, in our whole renewal and, you know, restorative, I, I don't want it to be totally focused on the restorative aspects of nature for humans. I, I, I think we ought to be promoting, you know, the nature heals, you know, itself. And that this is a really important area to demonstrate, to show that. And so that would be my recommendation is that we not, we not, we not try to change this to a woody environment that we maintain its integrity as a native grassland. And, and within that context, then, you know, be a little more creative as far as figuring out, okay, how are we going to get, you know, a shade, you know, shade elements in, you know, this particular area? And, and again, I think, you know, in, in our wildfire mitigation, we're looking a lot at the forest environment. When in fact, the most destructive fire for humans was in the grassland environment. And so I, I would hate to transport the forest environment down into the grassland and then talk about fire, you know, because it just seems incongruous. Anyway, so my recommendation would be to really focus on, on the native grasslands. And as Jeff and I talked, certainly historically, those areas had no woody vegetation for a variety of reasons. They, they now, there are now, you know, kind of peninsulas of, of, of trees that have come out. But historically, there was always a lower timber line and that lower timber line is back up into the hogback. And the reason that it was a lower timber line were several. One was that, you know, the indigenous peoples burned periodically. You know, there were lightning fires, so there was kind of a periodic cyclical fire regime there. And then there were drier, you know, there were drier environments that didn't support forested areas, although on Marshall Mesa, there are the pockets that you're trying to, you know, emphasize in the trailhead, there were pockets of where there was more moisture in trees. In any event, it's a long-winded way of saying that I hope that we focus our efforts on the grassland and the importance of the grasslands, native grasslands, because they're one of the most endangered ecosystems in, in this country, certainly, and in the world in general. And they, they provide a whole host of ecological benefits that sometimes surpass those that are provided by forest environments. So in trying to get shade, let's be real careful and have how we do that and what message we're trying to send in, in doing that. So anyway, thanks again. I, it's looks like a great trailhead.
Could I make one more comment? So just looking at the site plan real quick, I, I just wanted to ask you just one question about the design of those two public parking islands. Is there some reason why it can't just be one long island? And if there is, if there's an engineering reason, that's fine, but.
We, we will have an engineer looking at this as well and, and they might make other recommendations. I'm looking at the shuttle bus kind of coming through and being able to cut through and that sort of desire line that
Right.
impacts.
So my comment to that is that if, if that's the only reason, I would, I would think it would be a better design to just create a single water quality island on those two and make the two interior water quality islands into one. Gain a couple of parking spaces on each side and don't put the crosswalk through a cut through where you're just inviting pedestrian automotive interactions. I think it's a win-win. And if you make cars go around, so what? It takes them an extra two seconds or seven seconds to go around. But if you can avoid having cars hunting for parking spots, darting right, darting left, because it's full movements in both directions, the way this is designed. I, I think it just sets up a bad crosswalk for people, costs you parking spaces and doesn't really save anybody much time.
We'll look at that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good feedback. One last historical tidbit, I don't think that any of you probably know, but the old, the old building that used to be there was a very famous Ethiopian restaurant. And in fact, many people from, yeah, many, many people from Boulder, or you know, which is not very far away, would go out there to eat some.
Right, it was Raskasas.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So. Hey. All right. Are we good on?
Yes.
That, thank you very much.
Eileen.
We appreciate it.
Dave, I will leave it to you, but we have about 80 minutes left of presentations. This probably would be the halfway point. If you wanted a five minute break, otherwise.
Let's do that. Brady, if we do a, a quick break, are you okay with that? Okay. Let us do that. There are restrooms, I think all of you know, up here.
Yeah.
We're back with jackets. For those of you at home. Got a little chilly here at Council.
Yeah, we have climate resiliency here.
Coal front came through.
All right, Dan, you're still on.
Yeah, we're going to now put our attention to the camp program, provide an overview and an update and steps of staff recommendation of moving forward with camp. Just want to, before I turn things over to Chris Haglen, who is going to be leading us through the presentation tonight, just want to just emphasize the cross-departmental factor of this program. It's a, a number of different departments are coming together to collaborate and lend their voices and, and their talents and expertise to this. And we have a Francis Boulding is, is one of our main lead from Open Space who's participating on this effort. But there's multiple other city staff and, and departments involved in this effort. So, but with that, I am going to introduce Chris Haglen, who is the project manager for this. And he will be leading us through the presentation. And so, Chris, thank you for joining us. I think you're in Montana, if I remember right.
Yeah, well, I actually just got back. We did an eleven hour drive today to, to get back, but.
Well, I'm glad it went smoothly.
Yeah, we, we enjoyed Yellowstone and Montana. But yes, thank you, Dan, for the introduction. Again, trustees, my name is Chris Haglen, a principal planner in the transportation mobility department. I manage our transportation demand management program and our metrics program. And I was asked to be the project manager for the Chautauqua Access Management Program Evaluation. As Dan mentioned, Francis Boulding from the Open Space and Mountain Park Staff is on the project management team. And I'd also like to acknowledge Sam Bromberg, who is also in attendance from Community Vitality, which is the, the department in our city that manages parking in our districts. Another team member, Devin Jocelyn, from our Transportation Operations Team, was unable to be here tonight. But he is also a member of our project management team. Next slide, please. So as Dan mentioned, to really start this presentation, I would also like to acknowledge that, that camp is a program under the Access Management and Parking Strategies umbrella, or as we refer to it as AAMS. And AAMS, the AAMS document, which was approved by council in 2017, is one of the many guiding documents, like our Transportation Master Plan or the Boulder Valley Com Plan, that guides staff work. AAMS is that multi-departmental work effort, you know, for this camp evaluation. We have members of Open Space and Mountain Parks, Community Vitality and Transportation and Mobility all coming together. Some other notable AAMS projects that you may be aware of, the recently adopted curbside management program, our performance-based pricing program, and some future work we'll be doing on our off-street parking codes. Next slide, please. So camp was initiated in 2017 under an ordinance that sunsets this year. So over the past several months, staff has conducted an evaluation on whether to continue this program. And we have employed a variety of methodologies to do that, meeting with our key stakeholders, having numerous questionnaires out in the public to be answered. And based on what we've discovered is the, the foundation of our staff recommendation. Next slide, please. The purpose of this evaluation is really to look at both data and stakeholder input to evaluate whether or not we should continue the camp program. But we also see this as a really important opportunity to set a foundation for our future trailhead access management programs in general. We do know that Chautauqua is the most visited of the trailheads, but there's others that also may be in need of some access demand management due to, in, in most cases, parking demands. We want to also set that foundation for how we look at future trailheads and evaluate them. Next slide, please. So the camp program, or what I'll refer to as the camp season, is a program that lasts between Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends and camp runs just on the weekends and on those major holidays, generally not during the weekdays. The program includes managed and paid parking at Chautauqua and in the North Chautauqua neighborhood. Or as we refer to it as a neighborhood parking permit program or NPP. The program also consists of a free shuttle from remote lots, being New Vista Lot, right at the intersection of Baseline and Broadway, and also the CU Regent Lot. So two nearby lots that provide a place for people to park for free and have a shuttle take them the rest of the way to Chautauqua. A really important part of the camp program is the ambassador program run by Visit Boulder. They help visitors with, with parking questions, with use of the Park Mobile app, how to use the shuttle and, and understanding of, of how to get back to their vehicles afterwards. So the Visit Boulder ambassadors are a key element of the success of this program. We also worked with the employers of Chautauqua, like the Dining Hall, the Colorado Chautauqua Association themselves, to develop a transportation demand management program for their employees. Since there is no direct transit access to Chautauqua, and we do have some topography issues, getting there in ways other than a motor vehicle are sometimes difficult for employees. Next slide, please. So as I've mentioned, some of these key stakeholders, they're really critical to this program, not only in the design of the program, the operations of the program, but also in this current evaluation of camp. Some of those key stakeholders are listed here, including the Colorado Chautauqua Association, Visit Boulder, as I mentioned, Via Mobility, who runs the free shuttle system. They also are contracted to run our hop service in the city. The neighborhood to the north are, are park visitors who, who answer our questionnaires. And then the, the many employees that work at the park. Next slide, please. So overall, trail visits have remained relatively stable over the last few years during this, the, the camp program. Camp is, is generally in effect, the camp season is in effect during the busiest times that are typically from June to August and on the weekends. And the, what we find is from our, the trailhead surveys is that the majority of visitors are Boulder residents who arrive by vehicle. Next slide, please. So following a very strong start at the beginning of the camp program, the park to park, as we refer to it, the park to park shuttle ridership has decreased. It was severely impacted by COVID. And while it is on the rebound based on our, our data that we've collected, it is still about half of what it was at the, the very beginning of the, of the camp program. Overall, shuttle operations have increased in costs, but due to decreases in what we're paying to access the BVSD and CU lots, overall costs have remained relatively stable with just a 7% increase. Next slide, please. So during the camp season, visitors to the park and within the NPP in the surrounding neighborhood are charged $2.50 per hour. There are no time restrictions, although the typical parking sessions generally last between two and three hours. What we see during the camp season is that really the, the parking spaces along baseline and at the ranger lot are generally completely full. and at the Ranger Lot are generally completely full. But there is generally some availability around the green and at the McClintock Lot. And this is, I think, a testament to using pricing as a demand tool. We also see that parking enforcement is frequent and consistent during the camp season with healthy revenue from both the parking and from citation revenue of about $170,000 per year now. Next slide, please. We also looked at the North Chautauqua NPP and looked at utilization within that area. Residents, generally, they pay $10 per camp season to have a residential parking permit. They can also purchase visitor permits for $5 each that they can give to people who are visiting on the weekends during that camp season to be able to park on that street for free. During the camp season, the paid parking and the program really effectively manages demand. We see some high-demand blocks in the red around Baseline, but only really a couple in the neighborhoods. But what we're hearing from the residences is that on the shoulders of the camp season, when we're not managing parking, but visitation is still very high, and this is kind of the April to October timeframe in general, that on those shoulders, they're experiencing a lot of increased parking demand on their blocks and decreasing the livability in their neighborhood. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, city staff worked with the employers and the employees at Chautauqua to develop transportation demand management programs for them. A variety of different benefits were developed to encourage people from, for trying some alternatives, although carpooling really is the most viable option for most. There are telework options, and we've provided some long-term bicycle parking at some of those employers as well. In general, the employers believe that camp should be continued and that it should be extended to more months of the year and possibly more days during the week. Perhaps the most important thing that the employers wanted to see that would benefit their employees and how they get to work is having some direct transit access to Chautauqua. And also, for those who do have to park, perhaps making some commuter permits available within the NPP for Chautauqua employees. This is a practice that we do in the NPPs around our downtown and other managed districts in the city already. Currently, there are not enough parking spaces to accommodate everybody, every employee who is getting there to work. They are also very excited about micro mobility options such as Lime or B-cycle access. Next slide, please. Most, as I mentioned, most of the employees do drive or carpool to the site, but there are still some that park in the surrounding neighborhood, but outside the NPP. So walking greater distances after they park to access their jobs. Next slide, please. We did a questionnaire of our North Chautauqua NPP. Most of the respondents to that questionnaire do purchase parking permits. As I mentioned, during the camp season, they find that overall parking availability and livability has increased due to the program, but it's really on those shoulders of the camp season where, when the park is still getting 1,000 visitors per day, that they're finding their ability to park on their own block, if they leave at any time on the weekends, is severely limited, thus decreasing overall livability in their neighborhood. So the vast majority of respondents to our questionnaire want camp to continue. But again, that common theme of expanding it to more months out of the year and to Fridays as well. In terms of months out of the year, the general consensus is that April to October timeframe. They would also like to see the city use electric buses. And I think one of the more important bits of information we learned from the questionnaire is that half the respondents are willing to pay more for their NPP permits if we could extend the camp season. Next slide, please. We also conducted a general public questionnaire. This questionnaire was available at Chautauqua Buildings, QR codes on the shuttle, and so that's why I think you're seeing very different numbers from the questionnaire versus our Chautauqua Trailhead visitor information is just because of where they were accessing this questionnaire. But in general, the respondents to the questionnaire were Boulder residents. They visit about ten times a year. I think one of the more important things that we learned is that most respondents did not really change their frequency of visitation to the park once paid parking was introduced. So it didn't really impact how often they visit. Next slide, please. From the general public questionnaire, certainly it also indicated that the park-to-park shuttle was a very effective option to driving and paying at the park to park. And in general, that the respondents want camp to continue. A vast majority of respondents said, yes, we want camp to continue, but we want to see some further improvements, such as direct access to Chautauqua, extending the camp season, use of electric vehicles, and looking at additional days of the week, like Fridays or any day that there's a major event at the park. So a lot of common themes emerged from our work with our stakeholders and responses from the questionnaire. Next slide, please. We did work with our racial equity team and got input from community connectors in how we do conduct outreach to various populations in our city that may be underrepresented. And so we worked out a methodology. We had all our questionnaires available in Spanish, and we worked with some of the outdoor communities, Latino outdoors, Afro outdoors as well, to get some additional input from people that represent those communities. We also worked with the Center for People with Disabilities as well. And we have one major event outside of the camp season, the Festival de El Sol, which is going to be at Chautauqua, where we're going to conduct some additional outreach prior to our study session with city council in October. What we found is that, you know, out of those that did not identify as white, who responded to our surveys in general, they are Boulder residents. They visit Chautauqua two to five times per year. They generally arrive in cars, and it's typically more of a group effort, a larger group effort rather than a drive alone. It's mostly, you know, arriving in car pools. Those, they did report using the part-to-part shuttle or the hop to Chautauqua as well as another way to do it. One of the more important things I think we learned is that paid parking in general did not impact the frequency of people's visitation to the park. They have a high desire to continue camp, but would like to see some of the same improvements, extending the camp season, providing more direct access, transit access to camp to Chautauqua, and also micro mobility options. Next slide, please. So with that, you know, kind of come up to our scenarios. And with the purpose of this evaluation, essentially to assess the future of camp, you know, the options are basically, do we discontinue it or do we continue it? And, you know, based on our data analysis and input from the questionnaires and our key stakeholders, the staff recommendation is to continue camp, knowing that there are some anticipated changes that are already in the works or very likely to happen, but also some other modifications that are under consideration. Next slide, please. So some of those anticipated changes include micro mobility access. So we are looking, we recently expanded the Lime Scooter Program citywide. It was operating in a pilot just east of 28th Street, and just in the last couple of weeks, we've expanded it citywide. We are looking at how we provide Lime Scooter access to Chautauqua while managing parking and operations. There's a number of different techniques, geofencing technologies that we can use to say where they go, where they can't go, where they have to park, slows zones. So there's a number of different things. So we are in the process of doing that right now. We are also looking at a permanent B-cycle station at Chautauqua. One has already been approved by Landmarks, and that is a B-cycle station that would be very close to the Dining Hall. But we may look at some other locations as well. We'll likely look at some changes to the hop to Chautauqua route based on future changes in our cities. You know, one thing we've been talking about is how to connect the CU Hotel and Conference Center to the program as well. So there may be some other changes we'll look at. We're also going to update some parking signage to make it more clear on when you have to pay to park and how you can pay to park. One big issue that we're going to have to confront is that there is construction anticipated at New Vista High School in 2024 that could disrupt our access to that remote lot. So that is something that we are working with BVSD on and considering if we do have to shift, how we will shift to continue that park-and-ride model. Three possible modifications to the program, and these are some things we'd like to have some input from the trustees on. You know, one is the implementation of performance-based pricing. So performance-based pricing is a way in which you look at parking utilization and how it affects the price to park. So blocks that have the highest demand, you can raise the price on and then help kind of spread that demand to blocks that have underutilization. The city recently passed this policy. And basically, if a block, let's say, has greater than 85% utilization at peak times, that you can increase the cost of parking by 50 cents. And this is an annual process that the city is going to go through around all their managed districts, like in the downtown, Boulder Junction, and University Hill. And so implementing this at Chautauqua would be consistent with citywide policy, but certainly would have an impact on the price of parking at Chautauqua, given some of the high utilizations in and around the park. We could also, as was requested by Chautauqua employees and employers, establish a commuter permit parking program. This would allow some employees to purchase or employers to purchase for their employees additional parking passes in the nearby neighborhood to basically provide better access to those that do have to drive. One of the other things we're considering is, because we have a revenue that exceeds our operational costs of the shuttle and renting the lots, could we reinvest some of those funds to provide additional TDM benefits to Chautauqua employees? One such benefit could be, you know, like a B-cycle membership or Lime credits to access that, or additional van pool subsidies to try and form some van pools to provide another viable option for people to get to work. So those are some of the possible modifications that we're looking at. Now, one of the issues certainly is, you know, we've heard from almost every group that they want to expand the camp season. But, you know, there's certainly some problems with that. While the city could more easily extend the parking management component, extending the Free Shuttle, or what we call the park-and-ride model, is problematic due to our limited ability to access remote lots that we have been using and are in close proximity to Chautauqua outside of that, of the current camp season. We may not have access to those remote lots. And this, and, you know, while the city could extend the parking management, would we do that without a Free Shuttle option available to people if we weren't able to have access to these remote lots? And I think as a result of that, the city's staff is also recommended that we conduct some future exploration. And this future exploration would be conducted to explore the feasibility of expanding the camp program beyond that current park-and-ride model. And so what this essentially would be looking at is, how could we provide direct transit or micro transit access to Chautauqua during an extended camp season? This could also provide the possibility of serving additional destinations and origin spots for visitors and how they're getting to Chautauqua, including Flagstaff service as well. But what this would entail is, you know, a financial feasibility study to really understand the extent to which parking revenue could fund an expanded camp season to provide that direct transit access beyond that park-and-ride model. So this is something that, you know, along with our staff recommendation to continue the camp program, knowing that we're going to have some modifications to it and some possible modifications, but also to do this study to really understand how we can better serve that area. This also then, you know, is our opportunity to possibly coordinate with Boulder County on trailhead access in general, and how do we provide a more holistic system to serve our open space and mountain parks? Next slide, please. So what essentially staff is asking is requesting your feedback on the camp program, on some of those possible modifications to the program. And then, you know, the future analysis that staff is asking to conduct to move beyond that current park-and-ride model so that we could expand the camp season as is something that is highly desired by virtually every stakeholder in the program. So, thank you. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Let's do this. If there are clarifying questions from the board, now is the time to ask those, and then we'll return to the board for further discussion. So do anyone, John?
I do. I had a clarifying question on direct transit, and maybe I missed it, but are we talking about like a bus route that goes up to Chautauqua on a regular basis, connecting the, you know, Table Mesa or the downtown bus station? Or what exactly does that look like? It wasn't terribly clear reading the packet.
Yeah, so it would provide a direct transit access to Chautauqua, meaning a stop at Chautauqua. One thing that Via Mobility said, you know, if they were to provide more direct transit access, you know, would there be a viable turnaround location to kind of loop in and turn around at the park as well? But it's really providing transit service that would go directly to the park. Right now, you know, we have limited hop to Chautauqua for special events. We have the remote shuttle, but could we provide a shuttle system that hits more stops along the way, but includes, you know, Chautauqua? And then also, could we, you know, partner with the county and think about a more holistic trailhead access management plan in general? But essentially, it would be, you know, people who live or visiting the city of Boulder could get direct transit access right to the park and not having to use a remote lot.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Other questions?
Sorry. Thanks, Chris.
Other questions from the board? Brady, do you?
Yeah, I've just said one. It's a little great presentation, impressive collection of data. I think you've made a great case for continuing camp program. So my only question was on the cost and the budget. There was no overhead allocation in my reading of the packet. And so when we say we made $40,000, like, did we really? And is that really extra money that we should? I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but it just, to me, it was like, is that the right way to look at it? And I'm curious to hear your thoughts on it.
Yeah, so we receive a budget for camp, the camp program. I think it's in general, it's around $110,000 a year, $120,000 a year. It's varied over time, but that is in a specific camp budget line item. So that's how much we, you know, have to spend, and it's really on the shuttle operations and on renting the remote lots. So that's what we spend, and we contract with Via, we contract with CU, and we contract with BVSD, and we use those funds to pay them. And then, then we have the parking revenue and citation, and so this is collected by Community Vitality. And so this is revenue that is received through people who pay to park, through the Park Mobile app or through the kiosk, NPP permits. through the Park Mobile app or through the kiosk, NPP permits, and then any of the revenue from citations. So they do issue a lot of citations in the area every year. And so when you combine all of that, we, I think in, in 2022, that number was from, that's when we collected a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue. So they're two different pots of money. But, you know, what, what we wanted to show is that in general, the, the revenue from the parking management component more than covers the cost to operate the shuttle program. And, and, you know, it has a delta of around forty thousand dollars. And also another part of the, of the costs are the, the parking enforcement, because we are paying people to work on weekends and holidays, which comes at extra cost. So, but even including all of that, you know, the parking revenue exceeds the operational costs.
Understood, which is great, but, but then.
Brady, you're muted.
No, I'm, I'm not actually, but.
Just faded out here, I think.
Okay.
Oh, okay. We didn't get, we didn't get what you said.
Okay, anyway, I, I, I just, I, I, I read that correctly, I think, which is great. So we're, we're living within our means there. And I'm just saying.
We're not hearing you.
I, I think it's on our. I think it's on our end, Dave.
Yeah, because I, I can hear him perfectly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and Chris.
So Chris and I are just gonna have a little conversation.
Go ahead, no problem.
I, I will, i- if you guys can't hear me, I can, it's, it's not, it's not a critically, anyway, I was just, I was just questioning if we have forty thousand left over. You know, is it really extra money and what should we do with it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I get, you know, it's, I guess it would depend, you know, it's certainly money that's collected by Community Vitality. It's, it's there, you know, it is revenue to the city. So, you know, I think the way in which we were looking at it is, you know, if we were going to do this future exploration to understand, you know, could we provide this more direct transit access to Chautauqua? Move beyond that park and ride model, which is really the limiting factor in this expansion of the camp season? You know, would the parking revenue in an extended camp season? You know, maybe it's from April first to the end of October. Would that cover the cost of being able to provide direct transit service to Chautauqua as part of a, you know, a, a, you know, it could be a, a trailhead shuttle system? Or it could just be, you know, you think of it as, of expanding the hop to Chautauqua program to, to hit more parts of the city and, and provide better access, better direct access for residents.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Could I just, this is highly unusual, but staff has one question. Chris, I've never asked you this question, but you mentioned the direct transit to the trailhead itself. Could it also be possible that there'd be a bus stop along baseline right next to it? That it would drop people off at baseline if that turnaround was not a possibility?
Correct. Yes, yes, that's where we do. And we have that one, you know, area around baseline that we could easily serve. You know, we could do a loop in the neighborhood. I think people would really want the electric shuttles if we're going to do something like that. I think that's one of the, you know, one thing we hear a lot from the residents over the course of this camp season is, is the noise of, of the older hop buses. But, you know, we're, we're currently on schedule to receive, I think it's nine additional electric hop buses in the next year or so. So we're very excited about that. So we, we could provide that electric shuttle service as well.
Great, thanks. I will bring it back to the board for further discussion. Does anyone want to begin? John? You look very anxious.
Sure, I'll, I'll dive in first. I actually lived up at the NPP area for seven years. I was very lucky to have Chautauqua in my backyard. So, you know, I, I, I feel for the folks up there who are feeling, you know, the pain of finding a parking spot. We always knew that, you know, if we went to the grocery store on Saturday, our parking spot probably wouldn't be there when we came back. But, you know, that was, that was the price we paid for being up there. And I actually moved out the May that the, the NPP started. So, so I missed experience the benefits of it, but, you know, reading the packet, I had a hard time seeing, you know, how this program has been benefiting open space. You know, it doesn't seem to be driving more visitors. It didn't seem to be, you know, encouraging, you know, more diverse groups to kind of visit Chautauqua. It did seem to appease the neighbors. That much was very clear in the data. But my concern with exa- expanding the camp program is, you know, are, are we going to drive more people away from visiting, you know, open space lands by doing that? So that, that was my biggest concern and takeaway from looking at it. Also looking at adding scooters and e-bikes up there, I would bike up there quite frequently when I lived up there. And it is very dangerous to ride down baseline, ride down Ninth Street. So my concern with giving visitors access to scooters and bikes, you know, that are in town, they don't have helmets. They go blazing down baseline, they go blazing down Ninth Street, you know, how, how safe that is. And I really want, worry that someone's going to get hurt. I'm all for, you know, encouraging alternative modes of transportation, but I think we need to think about how we can encourage their use safely, you know, getting to and from Chautauqua and potentially directing them to other, other routes, you know, through the neighborhoods that are a little less steep and where they're interfacing with less cars.
Great, yeah, thanks. Michelle, do you want to jump in?
Yes, I have an, I have a number of questions. I want to make sure I stick within the clarifying questions part of this, but so I'm going to.
You've missed that, but you're still.
I missed that, okay. Let me first start and, and I, I have a series of questions and concerns, much of which I already transferred to Francis yesterday, but I have some new ones as well. From a process standpoint, Chris, are, where are we in the process and what modifications are actually on the table that we're being asked to provide feedback on? Like, right now, are we, you know, we're, we're in September, almost October. Is this our last chance to provide feedback on this? And then come April, we get a, an update saying, by the way, the season has been expanded and there are no more shuttles, free shuttles. And I mean, how is this all going to play out?
So we do have a study session with council scheduled for October 12th. And so that's where we will be asking council whether or not that they would like to continue the camp program. And, and if so, what changes would they direct staff to make to the program? If council directs us to continue the program, we will have to go through the process to update the ordinance, which, which guides the camp program. The ordinance is, is fairly high level in terms of its content. It's really about, it's really an ordinance that allows the, the paid parking management at the park. And it has the sunset date of December 31st, 2023. According to our city attorney's office, we would need to update that ordinance and, you know, the simplest way of saying is we could eliminate the date and so ending the sunset. And then it would, you know, last in perpetuity until, or until we were directed to stop the program. So that.
Was that being presented as camp status quo?
So it would be presented as, you know, the staff recommendation that will be presented to city council is likely to be, you know, the same one that you heard is that we should continue camp. We should continue it, knowing that there's some anticipated changes that are either in process or, or, or likely to happen, you know, like the updating of the parking signage. That's something we're, we want to do, we're going to do. Things like that. And then, you know, the question of specifically, do we want to have parking based on our performance-based parking policies? So are we going to increase the price of parking on those blocks that exhibit the highest utilizations at peak times? And we could increase that by fifty cents a year under the, the policies of the performance-based pricing. The other is, could we issue within that NPP, could we issue commuter permits for employees who work at Chautauqua? Who currently do not have access to an employer-provided onsite parking pass, but still have, you know, no other option but to drive. One important note is that the majority of Chautauqua employees do not live in the city of Boulder and many of them do have to drive from further distances and, and without direct transit access, you know, makes it, it makes it difficult to get there. The third possible modification is, could we use a portion of the, the parking revenue that we generate through the program to help fund some additional benefits to those Chautauqua employees, you know, and as I mentioned, you know, like a, a B-cycle membership? Additional van pool subsidies. We, we do believe that there is possibilities of, of forming some van pools. And so that would be another way in which we could, you know, use some of that revenue to, to help the employees with, with getting to work. So those are three specific modifications that we're looking at. Once, you know, if we go to city council at the, at the October study session and they say, hey, we want you to continue camp and, and yes, here's some modifications we want you to consider. Then staff will get to work on, okay, for the 2024 season, what are we actually going to be doing? And so that will be a process to, to design that, you know, prior to implementation of the 2024 camp season. And so there would be opportunities, I think, for the board of trustees, our transportation advisory board, to weigh in on the specifics, you know, of that design. Really, the, the, what we need to do most immediately is update the ordinance, which is ending at the end of this year. So hopefully that answers, clarifies your question.
Is perhaps embedded in that question is if council gives you the thumbs up, does that also mean that staff could look at the April through October season as well as the direct transit? Or is that a second different suite of questions that wouldn't be resolved by, before the end of the year?
Yeah, I, I think that may be more difficult because, you know, unless, unless the city was comfortable with extending the parking management of, of the camp program without expanding the, the free shuttle component. Because that's really the limiting factor under our current park and ride model. The city could say, you know, we're going to charge for parking at the park and in the neighborhood in expanded way, but we're only going to provide the shuttle during the, the, you know, what is now the current camp season. You know, that is a question, you know, that's a big policy question for us to consider. But I think really, if, if we want to expand the camp season, you know, I, I think, you know, our, our staff is, you know, how could we provide direct transit access and move beyond that park and ride model? And so that would really be in that, that larger feasibility study that could take place, you know, while we're, while we're thinking about the 2024 season and, and designing and implementing and getting ready for next year, we can also simultaneously, you know, conducting this larger feasibility work to, to really think of about the, the future of camp beyond that 2024 season.
And through that feasibility study, would there be opportunities for board and council to hear the results of that and provide some feedback at a future date?
Yes, for sure. Yes, we would certainly want to, to receive input from boards and council on that.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. With the revenue, you know, we, we keep touting this, you know, net revenue position of forty-something thousand dollars. We're talking about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of revenue last year. And a hundred and five thousand of that was derived from, through citations. I mean, a hundred and five thousand of dollars of that was through citations. So that tells me that something is not working there, that the way that we're profitable is by penalizing people who are not actually paying. And those people, and those are the people who are, are caught. And then there are the people who are paying are, you know, are doing the right thing. There are a whole host of folks who can't afford that, that, that is, you know, if we're talking about three dollars an hour, there are a whole host of folks that who potentially are not going and not getting surveyed about how affordable that, that parking fee is. So I, I have some concerns. I, you know, I was on the Parks and Rec Board, so I was working, you know, knowledgeable about Chautauqua, but, and then also on the Chautauqua Board when camp came about. And my concern has been around equity and, and are we, you know, really being inclusive to those marginalized people who may be staying away because of the high price to park there? So I do find that the data seems to be quite limited. We, we cite fifty-two respondents in the NPP, the, the neighbors who responded. I'm not sure what the demand, the denominator is, like, out of how many people could have responded to that. So that, that's a question that I have. Another question I have is, how many people actually responded to the TDM survey? And how many could have responded? And thoroughly around the surveys, how are we capturing folks who have stopped going? How, how during the camp season and, 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 you know, is price keeping them away? The, the price of parking keeping them away? So I have some concerns about drawing these conclusions about, hey, everybody wants us to expand the season. Well, it sounds like the neighbors do. That sounds like a lovely solution for them. But I'm not sure that we're taking into account the, the broader community in, in that. And it seems like maybe a limited data set from those whom might have responded from the TDM survey. But I, that is a question that I have for you all. It's like, how many people did respond? Is it fifty-two? Is it fifty, five hundred and twenty? You know, the kinds of people who responded. I spent a lot of time at Chautauqua while I was on the board there. And I know that there are a number of house cleaners who, who work there who, who don't speak English. Are they being encouraged besides the, besides the survey that are posted in the shuttles and in the buildings? Are, are we providing, are, are really inviting them to respond to that? And are, are they also in Spanish?
Well, I know, well, we have a number of staff people that have come on that can respond to some questions. I know Sam wants to respond to the, the parking data, but let me first say that, yes, I mean, out of, you know, we provided the survey for the employees at Chautauqua in both English and Spanish and worked directly with their HR people to get people to respond. You know, typically in a daytime situation, you've got, I think, over almost eighty employees there at the park. And so, you know, getting it about half to respond, I think is, you know, a fairly good response rate. Granted, these are, these are questionnaires. They're not statistically valid surveys. We know that. We know that surveys on BeHerd Boulder are not statistically valid. They're more like a, kind of a weather vane, give us a, give us indications of what they are. But, but we did have English and Spanish formats for the general public survey, for the neighborhood survey and for the, the employee surveys as well. Sam, did you want to address the, the parking revenue?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Michelle, for your question. Thanks, Chris. Just wanted to clarify a few points here. The revenue that was reported on that hundred and seventy thousand, actually, that's only the paid parking revenue. That doesn't include citation revenue. We don't generally report on citation revenue because we're enforcing it more from a safety perspective than as to generate revenue. So that's why it wasn't included in those numbers, actually. We do issue about two thousand to three thousand on average citations a year in Chautauqua. So if all of that was actually collected, it'd come to about sixty thousand, but generally that's not the case. We turn all those citations right over to municipal courts. And so some of those might be waived. All kinds of different things could happen from there. So definitely not anywhere close to a hundred and five thousand dollars per year in citations for sure. And then as for the residents that we surveyed in Chautauqua, NPP, Chautauqua North, NPP, there's only about a hundred permits we issue per year. So fifty-two respondents is about half of permit holders. Hopefully that is helpful. Help, happy to answer any other questions about that.
How many are eligible to buy NPP permits?
As long as you're a resident of the area, you're pretty much eligible to purchase a permit. You do have to. As long as you're a resident of the area, you're pretty much eligible to purchase a permit. You do have to ha, provide a vehicle registration, um, and a couple, and, and basically a docu, some kind of document that, uh, supports your residency of the area. So that could be like a utility bill. Or, you know, something to that effect, a lease.
Approximately, how many households would that be?
That's a good question. I'm not totally sure. I can look into that for you if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Um, Brady, I have more questions, but I want you to have a chance.
I think you should continue and I'll, I'll follow up at the end. It's fine.
Okay. Francis, I sent you some of these questions. And so, and it, um, and so you probably have answers to them now. But how many, how many trips were made to Chautauqua? So how, um, you know, we're talking about ten, ten thousand-ish riders per year. How many trips, um, does that include? And has that increased over time? Has that decreased over time? Like, what's the frequency of those trips? I guess that's what I'm asking. How many on aver, how many people per shuttle, per trip are ta, are taken?
Yes, and so I shared your questions and as you heard, Chris has been driving all day and hasn't had a chance to see those and prep to some of those questions. You're asking specifically about shuttle ridership and number of shuttle?
Shelves, yes. Shuttle ridership.
Yeah, Chris, is that something you have easy to reference or we could follow up on?
Yes, so, uh, in terms of, let me get to my right.
I will say, kind of related to that question, we did look at ridership of the shuttle compared to trail counts on any given day. And there was a really low correlation between them, which was to me a little bit surprising, like it ranged between two and eighty percent of, shuttle riders, uh, to number of people on our trail. So I think there's just a broad range day to day. It's good to keep in mind of who's actually going to the trails from the shuttle.
Yeah, so, so at the beginning of the camp season, so back in, you know, kind of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen period, we were averaging over eight hundred, uh, eight hundred and sixty, uh, rides per day, uh, on the shuttle. Right now, we're at about just under five hundred, uh, average daily rides on the shuttle. So, uh, it went down, you know, during COVID, one, you know, people weren't traveling as much. People, and there were limitations on the number of seats that could be occupied, uh, on the shuttle during COVID. But we are seeing it increase, but, but we're still not back at the, uh, the, the actual number. I, I can look up what the, the total number of trips is too, if you're like that information.
Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful. And do we, do you feel, Chris, that the twenty seventeen numbers of ridership of twenty thousand-ish was a success? Like, was that wonderful?
Yeah, I think we deemed that as a, it's a tremendous success for a new shuttle service, uh, to have that ma, that much ridership.
And I, I know that COVID has impacted things. We're in twenty twenty-three. Do, so that, do we also think that ten thousand is a failure?
I wouldn't consider it a failure. I'd say, you know, we're seeing it since COVID, it's been increasing every year. We just haven't gotten back up to those pre-COVID levels, but certainly, um, you know, it's not being utilized as much. So whether I, I don't think I would say it's a failure. It's still providing, you know, an option for people who choose not to, to have to pay to, to visit the park.
I, I guess I'm gonna just make, leave with one comment and then I'll let you all, um, have a chance as well. Um, I, I mean, like John, and I mentioned this the last time we talked about it, um, at an OSBT member, uh, meeting, which is directing alternative modes off of baseline is super important. You know, there are, I mean, I live in Boulder, I ride my bike in Boulder. A lot of Boulderites know how to navigate traffic, yet we still get killed very often, unfortunately, as a community. Um, and there are, there are even non-deadly crashes around here. I have some concerns about ma, ensuring that if we are going to provide these B-cycles, which I think is wonderful, but ensuring that they are off, they're directed off of baseline and through the neighborhood, possibly through the south of, south of baseline. And I just could see out-of-state tourists, um, getting on the baseline and getting in front of cars and it, it being extremely dangerous. So, um, and, and adding on top of that scooters. While it's, it's, uh, sounds great, and I know that they, those are great micro mobility options. Baseline is a terrible option. I'll give you all a chance.
Uh, Brady, did you want to?
Yeah, I've got it. Just a, a few more quick questions and I'll, I'll try not to belabor this. It does, the table on agenda item five B, page four, does explicitly say that those numbers include paid parking and citations? So I don't know if that's different than what you're understanding with Sam, but i- it's explicit that that's, so that the profitability of the program, at least as it's reflected in the packet, includes citation revenue. I thought Michelle's point is, is an interesting one. And I, I have, um, one, one comment and then two questions and then I'll, I'll stop. My comment is, I have personally found it difficult to figure out when camp is in effect and when it's not. And I'm perfect, I know there's a sign that says between this date and this date and on these days, and for whatever reason, I'm, when I'm eager to get to the trail, the calculus, I'm just kind of like, wait, what? When is, and, and I wonder if there's a way to more clearly delineate it. I mean, I don't know if a flashing red light when we're charging people for parking is over the top, but somehow making it clear when it's in effect and when it's not. And that's a suspicion I have that, that I'm not the only one that it has some confusion or, and I guess my, my question is twofold. One, Chris, does a fifty percent price increase, uh, for performance-based parking, does that actually change behavior in our community? Number one. And number two is if there's two to three thousand violations in camp, that's resulting in allegedly a lot of citation revenue. Is that unusual? Or is it just like, yeah, there's just like, people blow parking rules all the time. That's just the way it is. My suspicion would be that that's more than the average number of violations for the same area in other parts of the city. I could be wrong. And if so, do we have a theory on why there are so many violations?
Uh, I'll, I'll just a, address the, the parking cost. So it's a fifty cent increase, not fif- fifty percent. I, I thought I heard you say fifty percent, but, yeah, fifty cent. So, you know, there's, there's, uh, tons of, uh, literature and, and transportation research about the impact of, of price elasticity and, and being the more, uh, one of the more, uh, influential factors in changing travel behavior. So it's well established that, uh, having to pay to park does impact travel behavior. I think we can clearly show in our, through our Boulder Valley Employee Survey that charging for parking in our downtown over the years, while also providing, uh, an ECO Pass through the, the Master ECO Pass contract has significantly changed travel behavior in our, our downtown. So it's usually a combination of not only charging to park, but also providing a viable option to driving alone. That's when it works most effectively. So by us charging for parking, but then also providing, uh, a cheaper alternative such as the, the, the shuttle service, um, that really is, you know, how you change travel behavior. It's the carrot and the stick, uh, option. And, and just a note on the, on the parking revenue and citations, that, that could be, uh, solely on me. That could be my fault in, in the interpretation of, of the data that Sam provided me. So I apologize for that confusion.
Yeah, just another note on the, on the performance-based pricing and then on the citations. So we actually just implemented performance-based pricing this year. Downtown is our first area and we're, we're studying the effects of that. We're going back with an, uh, IP update to council this fall. So we're actually going to see what the direct change was from the fifty cent increase that happened on the most high-demand blocks downtown. So hopefully that will coincide well with camp to kind of see, does it change anything in Boulder? So that'll be exciting. I would look forward to seeing that and the results of that study that we're doing. Uh, as to the citations, um, you know, camp is a, a managed parking area. What that means is that we enforce it regularly. So it's not going to look like an area of the city that we don't enforce regularly, one that doesn't have any managed parking at all. Um, we do enforce every day of the camp season. Not all of the citations are failure to pay. There's definitely citations that can be issued for, for example, blocking driveways. It's a really, really common concern and complaint that we get from the neighbors, um, in the Chautauqua North NPP, because then they literally can't room, you know, they can't back out of their driveway and that can, that can cause a whole host of issues for those neighbors. So that's a pretty common one we get in Chautauqua, is the blocked driveway, uh, parking too close to a crosswalk, parking too close to a stop sign. Those are safety issues where, you know, a vehicle can't see a pedestrian trying to cross the street. So that creates conflict. Those are really important things for us to enforce as well, to keep that area safe. Because as you all know, baseline is, is pretty treacherous at times. And so I think there, there's probably, I don't know, because I haven't done the study, but it's possible that there's slightly more violations at Chautauqua, just because the demand is so high for parking there. And it's higher than other areas that we have in the city. But that would be an interesting study to do as well, is just to compare it with like downtown, for example. Hopefully that, that helps.
Just wanted to add you, um, Brady, you mentioned about confusion around, uh, the signage and when the season is in place. And that is, I don't think you're alone. And, uh, we've heard that feedback broadly. Um, and especially from our staff at the Ranger Cottage in terms of what they're responding to for visitors. And, um, that's something also we considered a little bit through this evaluation and, um, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're planning to do an update to that signage, kind of as part of this process next year. Once, um, we just, you know, the evaluation is complete.
Yeah, absolutely. We're actually updating a lot of the other signage throughout the city this year. We held off on camps specifically because we weren't sure what the outcomes of these evaluation were going to be. Once we know what those outcomes are, we're hoping to get that signage updated next year. So it's a little bit more clear. It is challenging. I mean, weekends and holidays between Memorial Day and Labor Day is kind of hard for some folks to understand. So clear signage may or may not, might not help that, but we're, we're hopeful that we can at least make it into one sign instead of like three or four in some places, um, and clean up some of that confusion.
Yeah, a, and that's one of the, you know, anticipated changes we have, uh, going into the next season. Just to update tho, that signage and improve clarity.
Harmon, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, I, I don't really have questions, just a few comments. Just the feedback that staff's asking for. So on the, um, the signage issue, you know, maybe, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day, not a lot, especially when we're talking about people, different cultures visiting. You know, it's hard for some people to know what American holidays are, for example, and what's on the last Monday of May or the first Monday of September, you know, you know, maybe just like June first to September first, you know, use, use dates. Or, you know, maybe like some of those signs in, you know, snowy areas where, you know, they're chain-up areas. They just have a sign that's hinged in the middle. And, uh, when summertime comes and it's over, they just hinge it down and you can't read the sign because it's folded in half. You know, and when Memorial Day comes, you could put the sign up, install the bolt, you know, and then everybody sees it for that portion of the year. And then you take it and just flip it down and it's just another piece of the management. But, you know, something just to make it really clear, uh, would be good. And, um, so getting to the, the question about whether we want to expand camp season. You know, I, I kind of thought about the guiding principles of Chautauqua, um, you know, to have an open, public, accessible place. And, and I would agree with the comments that, um, that Michelle made and it was, which John made. You know, th- this is a neighborhood that, um, that's experiencing some pretty significant benefits from it. And I don't think of them as the major stakeholder. I do think that, uh, the statistic that was the most telling to me was that off-peak, you know, after September, you know, before Memorial Day, winter parking utilization in the neighborhood is seventy percent. And it's fifty percent during high season because the camp program is working so well. So yeah, if I lived there, I'd love that, you know, the summer is when I can most easily park right in front of my house. So why wouldn't I want that year round? But I don't see that there's really a, a open space benefit or a benefit to Chautauqua's guiding principles of expanding that season beyond that which it already is. So I would, I would suggest that, you know, to the extent that we do change it and it's not Memorial Day to Labor Day, but it's absolute dates, I'd like to see June first to September first. And if we're trying to, you know, throw folks a bone in the neighborhood, May fifteenth to September fifteenth or, you know, some, but something pretty much like what we have now, um, is as far as I would want to see it go. And I do think that, you know, you're basically taking public real estate in the right of way and you're, you're privatizing it in some way by just giving free access to it, to the people whose houses are right there. And then making everybody else pay for it. And given the demographics, I find that kind of aggressive. And I also think that it's somewhat regressive to use the, the demand-based parking. Because I, I, I don't think people can tell, you know, there's no sign on the Park Mobile app that tells you what you're gonna pay. You just park and then you find out, oh, that's four dollars and thirty-five cents. And if it was six dollars and fifty-five cents, I'd still end up paying it because I've already parked. So, you know, I think if we're making revenue, the, the notion that, you know, we're going to increase it through the app, you know, on a demand basis, doesn't, I don't know, it just doesn't mean much to me. I would not recommend that. And then, um, a strong yes to commuter permits, maybe even with subsidies. And for anybody who works in the NPP area, not just Chautauqua employees. But, you know, if, if you need to get there by private automobile and you work there year-round and then suddenly, you know, you've got to park six blocks away for three months of the year. You know, I'd rather see those people have an opportunity to pay for a parking permit for the summer season. And given that parking utilization is only fifty percent in the summer season and seventy, the rest of the year, I think there's some headroom there to let the local people who, who need those parking spots, to let the workers who need those parking spots, get into those parking spots year-round. Um, and then I would say yes to the use of revenue for TDM strategy build-out. So I don't know, you know, I heard John talk about, and I heard Michelle talk about danger, using bikes on baseline and stuff. So I'm not going to talk specifically about what TDM strategies. I think that something you, you guys have professional chops, you can work on that. And you've heard people's concerns, but I love the idea of using some of the, the revenue to build out better TDM strategies as part of the reauthorization of the camp program. So, you know, in, in summary, no demand-based pricing, no increase in the duration of the camp season, clear signage, yes to commuter permits, and yes to the use of revenue for TDM.
So I get the last word, uh, and thank you, thank you all for, uh, your good comments. I think they were very helpful. But Chris, I gotta ask you, it's a little unclear to me what you need exactly from the Open Space Board this evening. And one of the reasons for my not really appreciating that is that I'm disconfident by the information that is the basis for a lot of the recommendations. And, um, I, I don't know whether it is misrepresents some groups or ignores some groups or omits some groups or whatever. But, um, it just strikes me that we're suggesting some major changes based on some very limited data. But the key thing for me is what is the impact on open space? And so I would like the open space staff to tell the board what the impacts of, you know, both the current program and the anticipated or proposed future program will be on the open space and mountain park system. I mean, all the other things that we've talked about as far as transportation and parking and fairness and all that are very important. But the key thing for me is, okay, what differences are, have we no, have we noted any differences? Changes, um, impacts, uh, from camp on, you know, open space management of the Chautauqua, uh, area? So I need to hear, I guess I need to hear from you what you would like. So I need to hear, I guess I need to hear from you what you would like the board to do this evening, but I also would like the staff at some point to let us know, you know, what we're seeing from, you know, the, the camp program specifically related to open space.
I, I will let Francis discuss that from the OSB, OSMP staff perspective. You know, what, essentially what we're looking for is one, should the camp program continue? Should we, should we disband the program or should we continue it? So that's kind of the first question. You know, and staff is recommending, yes, we should continue it. And there are some anticipated changes that we see that are going to happen if we continue the program, such as the improvement of the signage. And then there's some possible changes that we could make, like the NPP permits, the performance based pricing or the reinvestment of revenue into TDM benefits. So those are some possible changes we could take. So that, you know, and getting your input on those possible changes, you know, as we've been receiving. And then the, the second big question is, should staff conduct additional research that would enable us to move beyond, you know, assessing the feasibility of moving beyond the park and ride model that we're currently using for camp into a model that would provide more direct access, transit access to Chautauqua. So moving beyond that park and ride model, because essentially we're limited in the park and ride model. Because outside of the summer, we don't have access to those remote lots. And we did a lot of work to try and find where we could have, you know, a good remote lots and have access to them during that season. So that's essentially what we're looking is, you know, one, should we continue camp at all? If, if we, if we do continue it, what are some initial changes we can make, you know, and have ready by the 24 season? And then three, should staff, you know, should we spend staff resources in doing this further exploration to move beyond the park and ride model? And I'll let Francis address some of the issues directly.
Before you do that, Francis, just let me say that I, I don't mean to be parochial in my, you know, focus on open space and mountain parks, because these are other very important community issues. But I, I have to say, I'm failing to see the purview of this board in what you're asking, because we still have not talked about what that means as far as the management of open space and mountain parks, which is our purview. And so I would appreciate it if, well, let me, Francis, before you get in, I guess I will say that we can certainly take a vote or do a head nod on saying, yeah, we think it ought to continue or, or, or not, or it should be more fair or equitable or whatever. But the fact of the matter is, is that I want to know what the impact is on the Chautauqua open space and mountain parks. And are, are we noticing any difference or things improving and crowding on the trail? You know, what is happening as far as what we can attribute to this program on the system? So Francis, please enlighten me.
I, I think it's really important to recognize, you know, as we talk about how this is a multi-department effort, that there are certainly a lot of goals of the camp program that might not be specifically of benefit to open space. I, I think the, that question of benefit to open space, the main goal of campus to provide, provide options for equitable access to a really special and iconic place in our system. Not necessarily to increase the amount of people going there or, you know, all of the neighborhood livability or parking demand issues. So, you know, and I think in the evaluation, we looked at it certainly by providing the shuttle that does provide more options for how to, for a range of people and how to get to open space. We also looked a lot at our visitor data. We did a, you know, special Chautauqua focused survey in 2016 before the camp pilot started. And then as we'll get into in our next presentation, we're now doing these ongoing visitor surveys. So we do have a lot of information, you know, we know that visitation to the Chautauqua area has remained pretty steady. Displacement is higher than some of our, some of the rest of our system. We did look at things like crowding and overall trip satisfaction, which was very high. So you know, I think in general, camp has not had a, certainly has not had a negative impact on open space visitors. And we've seen a lot of consistency actually through different seasons and over time with some pretty like beneficial outcomes being recorded from kind of the visitor experience questions that we ask. So in my mind, the question on the table is, the main question is to continue or not to continue. And, and that really doesn't make a case to me that there's a reason to discontinue something that does seem to be working. I think in terms of the broader questions of managing Chautauqua, we could go a lot beyond camp. But the scope of that is really the shuttle and parking management aspect. And I, I guess the final point is our, you know, the livability was a big, around Chautauqua was, I think, a big reason why this project got started in the first place. And we do know that residents are our visitors. So I do think there's a lot of interconnected benefits there.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I ask, can I ask a follow on to that? Francis, do you get a sense that there would be any benefits to the open space program in Chautauqua in general by expanding the, the camp season? I guess, you know, my takeaway was you're saying like, hey, right now, you know, it's either net neutral, maybe a little bit positive to have it, you know, but giving these other transportation options. Do we get a sense that expanding it would, you know, offer more benefits?
I think for a couple of reasons, yes. I think to the, the park and ride model with limited seasons and days adds a complexity to visitors understanding how to use that area and get to it, that I think by exploring kind of a broader, more holistic transit model would really simplify how people could get to an area, which I think would increase who uses it. We commonly see that the more you simplify something, the better kind of compliance and acceptance you get. But I think there's also, you know, we are having these challenges that prompted us to do the camp pilot in other parts of our system. And both, you know, within city limits and in Boulder County. So we've got several of these park and ride shuttle model, models running as well. So this is kind of an opportunity to take what we've learned from camp and see if there's like efficiencies in applying that broader throughout access to the open space system.
Michelle.
I interpret the, the same number of people being on the trails, being this, you know, the same for camp and after camp. And I would deduce, I would deduce that there are more affluent people who are, are there now because they can afford to pay the, the parking or they're hopefully accessing the shuttles and, and the free shuttles. And my concern is that if we do have direct transit, are we still able to provide free rides to Chautauqua to the people who need it? And, and so they do have equitable access and, and to, to the park itself. The other comment I want to make about expanding it to Fridays, even just during the summer, is that all of the summer, the kids' summer camps are happening. And it's already pretty difficult to get your kid dropped off at a camp, a thorn camp there. And now you're, and, and then maybe you could drop them off and go for a hike yourself and not only paying $600 for your kid to be at camp, you're also paying for, for parking to get there. So I just want us to consider just all the implications of what's being asked here encroaching upon just beyond the weekends and, and the, and the seasons themselves. That, that's all I have.
I think those are great considerations. Yeah.
And, you know, the only thing I would add is that, you know, obviously it's an iconic and attractive place. But I don't think the data that has been collected in the surveys has adequately represented the communities that we're concerned about. And so, and some of, some of those specifically are the employees in of, you know, the various establishments at Chautauqua. And, and so I'm just concerned that, you know, if we move ahead with, without knowing exactly where we're headed, I, I'm not sure what, what positive benefit that is. My preference would be that we get, I would say, quote, better or more comprehensive data, more information upon which we can then make some more substantive recommendation. Right now, I feel that, you know, your presentation to council will be great. And council will decide and the open space and mountain parks department will do whatever it's been doing. And so I'm not, I'm not convinced that at this point, our recommendations are going to, you know, be of, of much substance, rather than confirm the current situation. So are there any other comments or would there be any proposal for some kind of response from the board?
You know, not ignoring your last comment, I, I agree with that. I do think that we should come up with something to give to council that's a little bit more cohesive. Megan, I sent you some bullet points here and I'm hoping that you can bring that up and that you can make it big enough for everybody to see. Give folks a moment to, to read them.
We all, are we all good on that? Is there any, are there any comments or discussion on this language, which would constitute probably a recommendation to council from this board?
I'm open to additions as well.
Well, I, I support the language as written. I mean, I think, you know, I made a comment about clarity on signs and, you know, maybe using calendar dates rather than holidays, but I think Steph probably heard that and, you know, doesn't need to change your, your set of five recommendations.
John, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I also support the motion as written. The other thing I kind of heard a little bit of consensus on was not supporting the, was it? Performance based pricing. I, I didn't hear a lot of broad support from the board on, but I, I hope staff heard that and will take that.
I think, I think it's captured into, it just says increasing per hour pricing, which I think captures that.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. That is captured into.
Great. Brady, do you have any further comments?
I'm trying to parse number five. I have support one through four. Anyway, yeah, I just, I, I, I'm not completely clear on what number five says, but I support one through four.
Would you have?
Could someone explain to me what that means?
Well, my reading of that means that the board would benefit from having more substantive information on what the proposed adjustments actually will be and how they'll function. And then as we've been discussing, explain the anticipated impacts on the various groups. And the, I, I don't know necessarily whether there have been groups that have been omitted from the surveying, but I do believe that some of the minority groups have been underrepresented in the surveys. And these surveys are self-selected respondents. And so I, I'm just concerned that we haven't really adequately received, you know, the spectrum of community input that would be.
No, yeah. I just want to make sure we, we're clear on what we're telling the staff to do. Because it's a little vague, but it's, as long as, as long as we can kind of work on fleshing out what that mean or that means I, I support it as written. Francis, do you have something to comment on that?
I didn't get a chance to respond, I think, to Michelle, your question related to number five. We, so I just want to clarify the survey work that was done to understand different opinions around camp. And so to, to get feedback from visitors who might not visit during the camp season or when the shuttle is actually running, we do run the visitor surveys at Chautauqua over the last two years outside of season and both weekdays and weekends, weekdays, sorry, weekends, weekdays and all seasons. So I think that's, that's information we're looking at, which is helpful. And then I would say for the question of people who maybe no longer visit Chautauqua, that's what these open participation questionnaires, like the Beaver Boulder results that we shared are really targeted at. And a lot of that is targeted at people riding the shuttle or going to the Ranger Cottage. But it's also tapping into the city's big communication network. Like it goes out in open space field notes, the big lists or email. So, and then all the targeted equity outreach along with comparison of kind of survey result demographics to census demographics in our community. So I just wanted to add a little bit of that background in case there was any confusion around it. And then please feel free to continue discussing.
Yeah, Francis, my, my concern is that, you know, Chautauqua always comes out in our surveys as the, you know, the number one place where people don't go anymore because of these various conditions. And so from my perspective is like, okay, how is camp associated with, with, with that feeling, you know, is in, in other words, when I'm looking for a benefit for open space and mountain parks from camp, that's kind of the area, the arena that I'm looking at is like, if we keep saying that people aren't going there anymore because it's way too crowded. So how is camp helping us manage, you know, that perception that Chautauqua is too crowded and, and not worth going to anymore? And that comes out in all the surveys. It's, it's Santa's, Chautauqua, Doughty Draw.
I'm trying to pull up the Chautauqua site specific results. I'm not sure them to be successful right now unless Anna wants to jump in. But we do measure crowding separately. And crowding is not showing up as a major concern at Chautauqua. The displacement is higher than other parts of our system, but I think it's also worth pointing out that just again, for context, not that the rest of this isn't true, but overall trip satisfaction at Chautauqua was less than 1% of respondents provided fair or poor ratings of OSMP services at Chautauqua in 2016 and of their overall visit in 21 through 23. So we're looking at really high trip satisfaction rates too, which I think is important to keep in mind for perspective.
I think we need to remember the wisdom of Yogi Berra at this point too, who said, nobody ever goes there. It's too crowded.
Where'd you come from, Brady? Right. We didn't, we couldn't hear you. All right. Uh, so do I hear a proposal for board consideration?
I mean, wh- what are we calling this?
Well, uh, what did we say at the beginning? I would say that, uh, this would be a recommendation to council. That would that be sufficient? So.
Yeah, I mean, we can include it into the study session packet as input from the board. We also have input from our transportation advisory board that we would include in any study session materials that go to council.
Okay, then I would make a motion that the OSBT requests that staff include the following recommendation in its study session packet to city council.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Uh, let's do a roll call on this one. Um, Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So it passes unanimously. So, uh, Chris, if this could be included in the council study session packet, that'd be great.
Yes, for sure. And I, I really appreciate your thoughtful input, uh, into this. It's really helpful as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, uh, the presentation and the discussion.
Yeah. So the motion language was just OSBT requests that staff include the following information in the study session packet to council.
Great. Are we ready? All right. Well, uh, the next.
Now that we've lost complete control of the meeting.
Well, no, no, we did. That was a great conversation. I really appreciated your, your thoughtfulness in that. Uh, we have one more item tonight, and that's to wet your whistle a little bit on, um, our latest iteration of our, uh, uh, public opinion and visitor experience survey. We're wanting to wet your whistle on year one of what would be a two-year study with a lot of comprehensive stuff later to come, but thought you would be, have some interest in knowing what we're starting to learn. So I'm going to turn things over to Heather and we'll get started.
So our human dimension staff have been working hard to complete the system-wide public opinion and visitor experience survey, which they affectionately call POVs. This project builds on decades of human dimensions monitoring and survey work and incorporates many new innovations in survey design methodology and technology. This data allows OSMP to better understand who our visitors are, what they value about open space, and provides important information to inform management decisions around visitor use. So tonight, Dionne Vander Wootie, the Human Dimensions Manager for OSMP, and Heidi, Heidi Seidl, sorry, Heidi Seidl, Human Dimensions Analyst, will present information on the overall project as well as preliminary results from the first, first year of the two-year project. The second year of data collection just wrapped up in the last few weeks. And so full project resort, results will be presented next year. So now I'll hand it over to, I believe Heidi's going to be starting out.
All right. Yes. Can you all see me and hear me all right?
We can.
All right. Fabulous. Great. All right. Great. Thank you so much, Heather, for the introduction. I really appreciate it. And thank you all so much for providing us the opportunity for the human dimensions team to come share our 2021, 2023 Public Opinion and Visitor Experience Survey Preliminary Year One Highlights. And as Heather mentioned, we're going to be referring to Public Opinion and Visitor Experience Survey as POVs moving forward. Dionne and I will be presenting and we have a short 20-minute presentation and the remaining time will be for questions and discussion. So we'd appreciate it if you could hold your questions and comments until the end because we have time allotted for that. Next, please. We have a lot of individuals who contributed to this project. I'm not going to go through them all individually, but we want to collectively say thank you to all involved from our human dimensions team members, to our leadership team, to our public participants. This wouldn't have been possible without everyone's contributions. So thank you so much. Next. Today we will cover an overview of the whole POVs 2021 to 2023 project, preliminary year one highlights, and looking ahead both within this project and future survey projects. Next slide, please. We want you to keep in mind that today and in our year one summary, we are just sharing preliminary year one highlights. In 2024, we will be sharing a full 2021 to 2023 POVs final project report, which will be a more in-depth, deeper dive into visitor survey trends and comparisons over time, including incorporating data from previous visitor survey iterations, cross-tabulations and subset results, spatially specific and seasonal highlights, coded and themed open-ended text responses, and accumulative in-depth discussion and interpretation of all the data and analysis we've completed. So please keep this in mind as we're reviewing the preliminary results specifically and what is and isn't included. Next. In the past, we've completed the visitor survey and onsite intercept survey, the residential survey, which was a mailer survey that was sent out to select households in Boulder City and Boulder County in various topical surveys. For countless reasons, including improved operational efficiency, connectivity of these topics, enhanced statistical representation and generalizability, plus an overall goal to streamline these separate survey efforts, we decided to integrate them into one single survey project, POVs 2021 to 2023, with two survey instruments, the recreation research questionnaire and the land management questionnaire. Through combining and integrating content that was historically included in various individual surveys into one comprehensive project, it provides us the opportunity to gain a deeper understanding and ability to speak to many subject matters both independently and relationally. If you're interested in learning more about the background or why we integrated all of these surveys, please reference Appendix A in our year one summary as there's an extensive explanation. Next. POVs project goals are twofold. First, to quantify and understand the current status along with trends of various dimensions of visitors to city-managed open space. And two, to support the department in data-informed recreation and visitor use management operations, policy creation and decision-making. So overall, we want to objectively understand our visitors and provide extensive opportunities for the public to provide their feedback, opinions and experiences. Next. You can see the three main master plan strategies as project addresses with the black Xs. Yet this project also provides insight and alliance to numerous other strategies as you can see with all the gray Xs in all three tiers. We provide visitor survey data and insights to many other workgroups and teams who are doing work or projects on any of these check strategies. As I mentioned, today our focus is on year one results with data collection occurring from September 1st, 2021 to August 31st, 2022. During this time period, we completed 361 survey sessions, which is approximately 92-hour sessions per season. 1,771 questionnaires were completed, made 2,450 contacts, and had a response rate of 72%. As outlined, and as you can see here, it was quite an extensive data collection effort. Next. There are three primary question categories. These include visitor characteristics, trip characteristics, and rating experiences and preferences. Underneath each category, you can see a few examples of the types of question bank themes, yet they're not inclusive of all the question bank themes asked under each category. Next. Listed here are more question banks that are included in the various POVs questionnaire versions and subsets. And again, since we combined several studies into POVs, you can see there's an abundance of topics and it's really exciting, the span and depth of questions we're able to ask for each subject area. We also want to emphasize that there are numerous topics that were first-time question banks as well, meaning we've never asked these questions on any questionnaire before. So we're really looking forward to sharing our data, not only here tonight, but with other OSMP workgroups. Finally, these are not all the subjects we collected data on. There are many more, which we'll be sharing results on in the final POVs report. Next. As for methods, one big change from previous visitor survey data collection efforts was the transition to a digital platform using Survey 123 and iPads for onsite survey administration. Next. Our sampling methodology was extensive. We administered onsite intercept surveys as visitors exited select trails. Surveys were conducted during morning, midday, and evening time sessions across all days of the week, months of the year, and all four seasons. We sampled OSMP recreationists accessing various recreation settings, visitation levels, trail types, including designated or undesignated trails and pedestrian and multi-use trails, and all types of recreationists. Our sampling provided us the opportunity to survey across our entire system, accurately representing day-to-day, or maybe I should say morning to evening, recreation experiences on OSMP. With this extensive sampling, no waiting is needed and it's generalizable to our entire OSMP visitor population. Next slide. And when I say extensive, visually I want to share the 183 sites throughout the whole open space and mountain park system we surveyed at. It was a huge undertaking for all involved. But again, I really want to thank our research technicians who conducted all of these survey sessions. Mind you, rain or shine, in the cold of winter, heat of summer, and everything in between, they were out there surveying. So next, I'm going to hand it over to Dionne to share some year one highlights.
Hi, everyone. Can you see and hear me? Okay?
You're good.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, as you've heard a few times thus far, and thanks Heidi for the introduction and background, what we're going to run through this evening is a very brief overview of some of the preliminary year one highlights. You can find more details and results for year one in your packet for this evening as well as look forward to a much more extensive reporting sometime in 2024. Next. So the first thing we're going to look into are our visitors themselves. And again, these are just, just the highlights. So our median age is 45 and we had a fairly even age distribution for each 10-year age group between 20 and 69 years old. We asked about race and Hispanic, Latino, and Spanish origin in two questions as in the federal census survey for direct comparability. And from these two questions, we learned that most visitors, a little over 90%, identified as white and 7% identified as of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin. Next. When it comes to where our visitors reside, you can see 80% are coming from within the county and that breaks down to 57% within city limits and another 23% outside city limits, but within other areas of the county. Next. Onto, I think we missed one there. Do you have a year, years, okay, we'll just go right to that one. There's one missing. Or maybe I'll just give you verbally what the highlights were. It was related to years visiting and visitation frequency. So we asked people how many years they had been coming to OSMP and then asked them to tell us how many times per month they visited during the last 12 months. And, and those two questions, we learned that 13% of our visitors were first time, first time to OSMP. Another 43% had been visiting for more than 10 years and nearly a quarter of our sample had been visiting for more than 20 years. And when it comes to frequency, 88% visited at least once per month. 29% reported visiting in between five and 12 times per month. And then we had just over 10% or 11% reporting that they visit every day or even more than once per day. Next.
I'm just going to go back. I think this is the wrong version of the presentation. So just give me a second.
Everything has looked great except for that one slide that was missing.
It looks like there's several missing from.
There's several that we hid, um, for purposes of our time limitation, but left them in in case there were questions.
Okay, I'll just reshare then.
Thank you. So I think we were on slide 29. For our trip characteristic highlights. Um, so this section is getting at, um, the trips themselves, what they're doing, um, who they're coming with. So primary activities when they were surveyed on any given day were hiking, walking dogs, biking, or running. And visitors were most likely to come by themselves or with one other person. 17% of our sample had one or more children with them as defined under 18. And then one out of three visitor groups had one or more dogs with them on the day of the survey. Next. When it comes to how long they're visiting, most visitors are spending between an hour and an hour and a half on their trip to OSMP and 30% are actually staying for two or more hours. Compositionally, our visitor, visitor parties were made up of just me, uh, party one, followed by family being with friends or with an organized group. Next. Slight majority are arriving by vehicle with another 48% arriving via human-powered modes, such as walking, biking, or running to the trail. And then there are very small handful of people that reported, um, other things such as ride shares, such as Uber and Lyft. Next. When it comes to trip motivation or what is, what is their primary reason they're coming to OSMP? Most people or the top three are reporting physical fitness, otherwise known as exercise, to enjoy nature or to be with their dog, closely followed by spending time with family and friends and focusing on psychological or mental health. Next. Okay, moving on to ratings, experiences, and preferences highlights. We asked people to report on all of their encounters for all of the, all of the activity types they saw on any given day. They were able to report them as more or less conflictual to pleasant and all activity types were rated as neutral or pleasant by 90% or more of those visitors that had countered each respective activity. And on the flip side of that, we have an overall daily conflict rate of 6%. Most visitors, 92% at the trailhead, did not experience crowding. 94% did not experience crowding while on the trail. And 8% did report some level of displacement. And to your point, Dave, earlier, the four top locations reported are Chautauqua, Sunitas, Marshall Mesa, and Doughty Draw. I would say, when we haven't done the open-ended, um, coding, that was one of the things we'll get to for 2024. I'm just doing a very quick look in the conversation as it was going this evening. It looks to be a little over 2%, close to 3% of the overall sample that are reporting Chautauqua as an area of displacement. Uh, collectively, the top reported reasons for no longer visiting include crowding, parking problems, wildfire, wildfire closures in the Marshall Mesa area, or problems with dogs. Next. So we asked people, where do they get, where do they get their information when they're planning for their trip to open space? And the top four information sources used were our own website, followed by Google and Apple Maps, speaking with friends or family, or other trail apps such as AllTrails or CoTricks. And one thing we wanted to note on this one was about a quarter of our sample reported using no information source, meaning that they're not referencing anything prior, prior to their visit. Next. So six percent of our respondents had provided feedback to O S and P and that could be on any topic during the last twelve months. This question was geared more towards informal types of feedback. Such as an email to staff through Inquirer Boulder. Speaking with staff onsite as shown in the photos here. Or phoning someone in the department and. Of that six percent, the top three reported topics were related to visitor use management items. Such as parking or dogs or trail access. Next was trail maintenance items such as reporting erosion or down trees or broken gates. And a third was regulation items such as questions about permits or allowed activities. Or facility reservations. And one thing we did want to note on this one that. A third of the people that reported feedback was actually to say thank you or provide gratitude to O S and P and our staff. Next. So we also asked people about more formal types of engagement. Things such as this meeting this evening or online community surveys other than. Um, sorry, uh, community surveys other than the one that they were participating on. The day that we collected this data. Or it could be a formal request for our community feedback via email. Um, any sort of thing where open space more or less is the sponsor or host and it's more of a formal. Public engagement and four percent of our respondents said they had participated in anything like that. In the last twelve months. Next. So another thing that we were really excited to inquire about was. A series of charter purpose statements taken from the B R C itself. Our respondents were given ten statements reflecting different charter purposes. What you see here are just the top three ranked as moderately or extremely important. On the themes of aesthetic value, quality of life, scenic areas or vistas. And preservation of water resources. Um, you can see in your packet, but I'll just verbalize here, there were actually six of our charter purposes that had a greater than ninety percent. Uh, rating as moderately extremely important. We're just showing the top three here to not have busy slides. Next. We also gave respondents a series of twenty seven visitor use management strategies. Across three open space management themes that you can see here. To protect plants and wildlife, to address visitor conflict, or to address increasing visitation levels. We asked them to rank each one individually according to their level of support or opposition. And I'll be highlighting just a few of these today. Um, as with everything else, you can see the full suite of responses in your packet. Next. So when we rank ordered all twenty seven of these items into most supported. The top three, two were associated with the theme of plants and wildlife protection and one was associated with increasing visitation. And the three that were most supported were requiring visitors. To stay on designated trails, constructing new trails. And the third most supported was the no action alternative. So just today I did look up what would be the fourth if it wasn't the no action alternative and it was constructing new trail heads as most supported. Next. If we go on to most opposed, they were all on the theme of managing for increasing visitation. And they were associated with hardening existing trails. Requiring a permit or reservation during peak visitation times. And charging for parking at more O S and P trailheads. Next. Um, I believe as Francis iterated earlier, we did ask everyone regardless of which version they got. At the end of the day, all things considered, everything they had experienced on the day that they participated in the survey. How was your overall experience to the O S and P system that day and? Ninety eight percent reported a good or excellent. Trip satisfaction and we only had three, three individuals out of. The one thousand six hundred and fifty two that responded to the question, this question that said they had a less. Than average experience. Um. We, the H D team, think this is pretty phenomenal and unheard of in public lands management. Um, and that's the end of our very quick look into preliminary highlights and next. Heidi will go over some of the applications and what we have planned for the future.
Thank you. The applications from all the data collected from this project are quite vast. They include the ability to objectively speak to visitor policy and recreation research topics. Via actual data, not just anecdotes. Inform and support decision making for various plans, including the master plan. Future recreation planning and visitor master plan updates. Provide insight for operations and day to day management, including staffing and amenity provisions. Update visitor demographics, trends, and detect change. Since we continue to add to our decades worth of visitor survey data. And now more so than ever, the ability to determine variance in visitor attributes and recreation preferences of our visitors. Across time and space due to our extensive sampling efforts. Next. Looking forward, we just completed year two data collection at the end of August, twenty twenty three. And we'll be working on the cumulative final report, which we plan to have completed in twenty twenty four. Next. Plus, we have already begun study design for post twenty twenty four and beyond. Moving forward, we will plan to continue to administer visitor surveys annually. Yet at a smaller scale with a subset of current sample. With the plan to visit all survey locations over a three year timeframe. We will be incorporating new question bank themes each year. And overall, we look forward to coming back and sharing more about the project in the future. Next. So thank you all for listening and now we would like to open it up to discussion and questions. We also have a couple of questions here that we would love to hear from you all to better help and support you in the future. And if you go to the next slide, the next two slides, we have some great pictures of our staff, our research technicians out in the field. Even had a horse swing by to fill out the questionnaire. We included his.
We want to know what the horse said.
Uh, he had all the answers. He said, hey.
Trails nay, right? Thank you guys very much. Uh, it's a good presentation. We appreciate it. And I will say that. Uh, the work that you're doing is very impressive and especially for an organization of this size. And responsibility is really impressive. So thank you very much. Uh, I will. Ask the board if they have any clarifying questions and after that, then we'll bring it back for discussion. So are there further questions, John?
I did. I hopefully have an easy one. Uh, on the slide where it said what visitors were kind of opposed to. Uh, it said hardening existing trailheads, I think. What, what does that mean?
Hardening existing trails such as applying a trail amendment on top of a natural surface to make it more durable.
Okay, so like gravel or pavement or something?
Um, it could be something of that nature would depend on, I guess, geographically where it would be and I guess. Kind of what the associated infrastructure is in the nearby area. We wouldn't want to put anything seemingly out of nowhere just to, just to harden it.
Okay, so, so just changing it in general from the natural state to make it more durable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, other questions? Brady? Well, believe it or not, I have a couple.
Hey.
Dion, it's good to see you.
You too.
Uh, so, um. The, I guess, uh, the question I have is the context. How are we expecting to use the data and results, the information contained in the recreation surveys or visitor surveys? In management decisions and let me just kind of add a little. I, I'm somewhat worried about the context and quite frankly, some of the questions, I guess, were the basis of some of my concern. But I, I'm just wondering, um. You know, if, if we're using, if we're going to use this, you know, results of this survey alone. To make management decisions because my concern is that. There has to be a context for decision making of which this, the results of this survey certainly contribute. But, uh, other information, you know, resource condition. You know, all sorts of other things are important as well. And. Uh, let me just give you an example, my concern, when, when people are responding, saying that they want more trails. We're not putting that in the context of the non-native. Species condition on, on the system or we're not putting that in the context of. You know, the forty million dollar backlog of, of, uh, you know, trail improvement or maintenance issues. And so. Uh, I'm a little concerned that we're, we're getting that kind of information. And if it's standalone information, it looks pretty impressive, like geez, people want us to build more trails. But if in fact they knew that, you know, trails are vectors for non-native species or that we've got a backlog of. Trail maintenance, you know, that's forty million dollars. Would they say the same thing? So that's my question. Um, or and Dan, I don't know, maybe you're, you're. A better person to respond to this, but what's the contextual? Base for using the recreation or visitor use information?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think you're absolutely right that it's, it's one piece of data that we would use. I mean, the master plan also speaks to things such as when we ask, uh, the tearing of our strategies of. Building new trails and land acquisitions ranked lower in terms of the strategies. Based on the need to taking care of what we have. So, you know, looking at. What our master plan strategy says would be an important context as well as a survey like this. So. I agree with you that it's, that it's. Part of a holistic set of information that we would bring to the table.
Great.
Yeah, and I can chime in with that as well, exactly, Dan, what you said. Um, and one example just from this evening was the Marshall Mesa redesign and looking at that. So. If you recalled at the beginning of that presentation, they shared some of our H D visitation data. And again, just one piece of the puzzle that they're considering when they're looking at that project.
Great. Uh, the, the other question I had is that, you know, looking at the, some of the preliminary results from a management perspective. They're, they're pretty revealing and one of them as an example is. That looks to me like looking at the preliminary data that half the dog walkers. Never use dog stations. In it, and you know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, well, geez, if, if that's true. Then what are they doing? So, so.
I can take that one.
I think that we ought to probably figure out what they're doing. Are they not picking up poop? Are they? You know, we picking up poop and leaving it, you know, along the trail or kind of what's happening out there where people would respond. I think, uh, you know, in an unbiased fashion that no, we're not using them. And so something must be happening out there. Um, let me just give you another example, uh. Well, uh. Less than ten percent, so the, the concern I have in, you know, this may go to you is on. On our education, we're saying nine percent or less than ten percent of the respondents. From my perspective, were educated about the value and importance and, and needs of. The open space program. So, so less than ten percent of the respondents were that. So. We're asking their, the other ninety percent their opinion on things they may not know anything about. And so I just want to make sure that we're clear on what it is. How it is that we're going to use this information. For example, if someone asks me. How do you think we should design a nuclear submarine? You know, I, I don't know. I, I probably have all sorts of ideas, but I wouldn't have a clue really, you know, about how to design a nuclear submarine. And so. Um, uh. That's somewhat my reaction to this is that, well. Uh, I think the people that went, you know, are in our education. Program, the very valuable, very excellent program. But if only ten percent of the visitors out there have been. In that kind of a program, how knowledgeable are they really? And how valuable are their opinions without? Kind of that context. So anyway, uh, that, those are some questions I think in my mind that I'm. Looking forward to the final report and, and kind of what the, what those results look like. But thanks again. I think this is an excellent effort, obviously very extensive and. Uh, I think the data in general are, are good. So having said that, that would be a, a segue into bringing it back to the board. Um, for any further discussion.
My dog does its business at home.
Your what?
My dog does its business at home.
Really?
I swear.
You've got it, you've got it. We've got a market. Uh, so that's good to know. Yeah, any other comments or questions?
I'll just pledge to the H D staff that you'll get the first time slot at the next meeting rather than the last. Keep me to that.
We appreciate your tenacity and hanging in there and also the substantive, uh, informative presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure. Can I ask one follow up here? We didn't get to our two prompter questions. So I'm wondering. If no one had any ideas or everyone's tired or you're just, you want to wait for the more comprehensive report in twenty twenty four, but. They were, uh, compared to what you saw this evening. And again, it was just a very small snippet. What would you like to see more of in the more comprehensive twenty twenty four report? And then secondly. Um, how do you as the board use these data and how can we help you with access and interpretation?
I would like to see more analysis. Like the so what, what was surprising, what's actionable? Dave, I don't think anybody sees these data as determinate is, is like some kind of deterministic indicator of. Management strategies, like for example, trail hardening. We have to harden the trails. People don't understand. What Chautauqua maybe looked like before we did that and maybe they were against it, but now they don't have to. Walk across fifty wide feet of braided trail. I mean, managers know better sometimes. But I would like to see more analysis. More things about what was surprising and what is actionable in your view. On this, what, what is an example of like, well. Maybe we need to do more education on trail hardening because it's actually really important. Not that we won't do it, but we need to tell people why it's important. I, I'd like to see a little more of, of a. Draw the lines for us between potential. Responses be the educational or, or even maybe in, in certain instances, management strategies. And I get, I know this is preliminary, so that wasn't on the scope for tonight, but that's what I look forward to in twenty twenty four. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good comment. Exactly. Uh, other. Comments or responses to the questions Dion posed? Let me just add one more example, which will kind of bear, uh. To what, uh, Brady just said, you know, the other, another interesting thing for me was the, was the. The question on trail use. So seventy one percent, I think, said that they. Use trails. Well, twenty nine percent said they didn't. So what are the twenty nine percent doing out there? And so that's what, uh, I think that, you know, following up on what Brady said that, you know. As far as, uh, some of the helpful analysis for both staff and board would be to. Follow up on some of these things and pursue them a little more detail to kind of flesh out, okay. What is actually going on out there?
Yeah, um, for that one in particular, we believe it's a survey design. Problem that we learned kind of. Very long into the data collection process. There's a handful of things that. It was a learning, you know, obviously two years data collection. There were things that were working, things that weren't working with the public. We do have a handful of things such as that particular data point that we're going to. Have a revamp of the design in the twenty twenty four on. Um, I think people just missed that trails. Option and or they didn't see trails so much as a service and facility as the way the question was worded. They were thinking of like an outhouse or a garbage can, not the trail itself. They were thinking of like an outhouse or a garbage can, not the trail itself. Going forward, given that it's a trail intercept survey, I think we're going to go with something along the lines of other than trails and assume everyone uses a trail because that's where we intercepted them.
Okay, um, in your final report, it might be good to kind of provide that clarification or that explanation. Um, so.
Handful of tidbits on improving design.
Uh, we good? Thank you very much. We appreciate your hanging in there and we'll look forward to the next iteration.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you out there too at some point. All right, Dan, uh, I think you get the last word.
Oh, you actually want me to say some things more?
I figured you'd lose your voice by now, but, uh, it's still there.
I actually think I might have one, but no, oh, I mentioned it. I was gonna give you an update on the boards and commissions. Right. So we did that. So my work here is done.
Great. Uh, any other comments for the good of the order or are we done? Me is the turn. Thank you all very much.